Good evening and welcome to the January 6th, 2020, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. Before we begin tonight, we wanted to make an announcement. This morning, we lost from illness our out-of-district coordinator Stacy Conti. At the end of our Pledge of Allegiance this evening, we're going to ask you to join us in a moment of silence. We just wanted to let you know what Ms. Conti did for our district. Stacy Conti was employed in the Merrimack School District beginning in 2012. She spent four years as a special education coordinator at James Mastercolla Upper Elementary School. The last four years, she has served us as our out-of-district coordinator. Prior to coming to Merrimack, Stacy was a classroom teacher, special educator, and administrator in other Massachusetts, Florida, and New Hampshire districts. Mrs. Conti was very knowledgeable in the area of special education and incredibly resourceful. She cared for some of our most impacted special education students and was a resource for families and her coworkers. She will be sadly missed, and our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family at this time. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We also announce tonight that Board Member Brandy Nunes and Student Representative Johanna is also out tonight, and Johanna is studying for midterms and finals, and we wish her the best of luck in her exams. Item number two is public participation. Anyone from the public that would like to speak, please come to the microphone, either here or at the main table. State your name and address for the record.
Richard Foote, 129 Indian Rock Road in Merrimack, of course. So my question was for the last week's meeting, or last time meeting, was about the Brentwood building. You mentioned more than a few occasions that it plays his ultimate destination to be torn down. Why are you spending any money on oil and heat and everything else on the place if you're just gonna tear it down? It seems kinda like a waste of money.
Yep. Mr. Foote, as we had mentioned in prior meetings, public participation is for us to take input from the public. If we were to have a dialogue about a specific item, it would legally need to be posted on an agenda item. So we will take your testimony about those concerns, and when we do talk about our facilities and our district-wide budget hearings, we hope to have some more answers in our discussions.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you. Seeing no one else from the public wanting to speak under public participation, we will close public participation, and we'll go on to item number three, which is the Merrimack Concern Taxpayers Budget and Spending Discussion, and I invite to the table Scott Adler. Welcome, Mr. Adler.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Barnes, school board members and administrators. Thank you for allowing me some time tonight on the agenda to have an open dialogue and open discussion regarding the budget and the spending in the district. My goal for tonight is pretty simple. It's to educate myself, educate the public, and look for ways to reduce some of the spending at a minimal impact to students. I'm not here to point fingers or place blame. I just wanna understand where we're at, where we're going, and challenge all of us to look for ways to reduce spending. The data that I have in my slides tonight came from one of two places. It either came from the Merrimack School District website, or it came from the State of New Hampshire Department of Education website. Some of the concern that folks in the community have raised surround the overall increasing budget, staffing levels, test scores, and others. I don't intend on trying to solve world peace tonight, that's not why I'm here. All I wanna do is try to get some dialogue and more of the public involved. So, before I begin going through some of the slides, does anybody have any questions? So, the first slide is just the agenda. Tonight, we're gonna discuss the declining enrollment versus increasing budget, the approved budget versus expended budget, enrollment, student-to-teacher ratio, total teachers' and average salary, cost per pupil, and full-time employees. So, the first chart that I have is data from the Merrimack School District website from 2008 up to 2019. I purposely did not include 2019, 2020, or the proposed 2020, 2021 information in here, because I wanted to have as close to an apples-to-apples comparison as possible for other districts that we're gonna be comparing to. So, the chart kinda speaks for itself. We've had a decline in enrollment significantly, while at the same time, we've had an increase in the budget. The thing that is most interesting to me is when we look right here, we were fairly flat and sustained, and then we had a sudden spike that has just continued to grow. And I'm curious about two things. Number one, does anybody recall why there was such a spike? And secondly, can anybody explain why we have such a growing budget with a decrease in student enrollment?
Are you looking for us to answer as you go through?
Sure.
Sure, that's fine.
Probably make it easier that way.
That's fine with us. Would you like to start, Mark?
Yep, so I'll have Matt talk about the budget component of it. However, I forget exactly when it was, but it was a couple of months ago. I presented to the board data that speaks to actually an increase in enrollment. We have projections that we do every year. This year, our projection from our demographer was an increase of between 50 and 60 students per year in the district over the next five years. That also comports with what our actual numbers have been over the last few years. So we actually haven't been in a declining enrollment for the last several years. Actually, tonight, after your presentation, we're going to speak about a little bit more about enrollment and speak about actual numbers tonight. So, I'll have Matt speak about the budget piece, but I would actually say to you that, and we've been, we, you know, had this presentation some time ago, and I'm happy to speak about it again, our numbers have actually increased and are on the incline to this day, and we anticipate that's gonna continue. So that would be my answer to that part, but Matt, can you speak to the budget part?
Well, part of the increases, people always like to use the term CPI. CPI's been 1.67%. How come you guys aren't climbing at 1.67%? Or CPI's been 2.8%, how come you're just not at CPI? Well, the large majority of our budget is the New Hampshire retirement system and health insurance. And everybody knows the rates on health insurance has gone up astronomically. Last year, we were looking at a 13.7% increase for this year, and then next year, we're looking at a guaranteed maximum rate of 8.5. I can't recall the other years in there, but that's when things started to spike. Also, around 1314, the New Hampshire retirement system used to be for teachers, for regular employees, for police, for fire, used to be funded in part by the state of New Hampshire. The state of New Hampshire walked away from that obligation. When that happened, that probably increased our operating budget for retirement by around at least a half a million dollars, 'cause they used to put a certain percentage in, and then they stopped. It was the same year where they used to pay for maybe $450 a student for driver ed, 'cause it was an important program, and they stopped. So the people had to, the students, students' parents, me being one, had to pay the full amount of driver ed. So there's been a lot of push-down from the state. There's also been a little bit of, this is just the gross budget, so I'll only talk to the budgetary side, but the health insurance, the health insurance increases, and then the New Hampshire retirement increases also, which everybody in this school district who's a full-time employee belongs to the New Hampshire retirement system. It's not a, it's not an option for us at this point. We talked years ago about the possibility of getting out of the New Hampshire retirement system, 'cause people were saying, "Why don't you just give everybody a 403B or 401K like in the private sector?" If you're stock, well, we don't have stock, but if it goes up, it goes up, if it goes down, it goes down. The issue with that is, what we would have to do is we have a certain number of employees who are vested in the system, and we have a certain number of employees who are currently collecting from the system. So we would have to pay the state of New Hampshire retirement system the future costs of all those obligations. And it was something like 30, 40 million dollars into the future that we would have to pay to get out of the system. Plus, those benefits are written into the teacher's contract and the support staff contract. So we would have to negotiate with them to get that out of the contract. So, it's nice to say, "Okay, why don't you just give everybody a 401K." You can't do that, because you have future obligations that go well far into the future. One day, I hope to be collecting myself. And so, that would be an obligation that they would have, you, Merrimack would have to pay in order to get out clean from the New Hampshire retirement system. So that's why it's really not, it's not feasible at this point. But those are the big two areas, Mark, if you have anything else. Yeah, in that area, you know, we still have, we still have bonded debt going down for the next budget year, but that's not reflected there. But those are the two main drivers. And then we've had, you know, contractual salary increases with the teacher contracts, 'cause we pass the teacher contract every single year since I've been here, and the same thing with the support staff contract. So those increases in wages, even for the same amount of staff, because between 1415 and 1819, we probably have less teachers than we do right now. But the cost of those teachers that we do have are more because of increases, pay increases. So pay increases for staff, benefits for staff, New Hampshire retirement for staff, 'cause our budget is probably 75% people, that's what our capital is.
And Matt, I think it was 14 was around the time that we had the state mandate that we could not just do reduction in force based on seniority, and that we had to have an additional factor. And we used educational preparation. So more of our teachers are now getting a higher salary because they're more pursuing master's degree and postgraduate degree credits, which give them points toward against riffing, which reduction in force riffing.
So there were some significant things that occurred in that 131415 timeframe then, is what it sounds like.
Absolutely.
And then continued on.
Right.
Yes.
And our New Hampshire retirement, every biennium, our participation, our rate of, that we have to pay goes up every, by a couple percent every two years.
It started in 1975, the New Hampshire retirement system, and it's gone up every, every single year since then.
I wanna say that the state stopped in 2010, if I'm getting it right, but we also had to take a loan of $1 billion to make it solvent. And I wanted to say that was around 14.
Yeah.
So we're paying the loan on that.
It was when, I remember it was when Governor Lynch was in office.
I believe so.
Yes, 2014, okay. So that's the, that's the short, if you can believe, answer, yeah.
And for level-setting purposes, this loan and the 2% increase, that's for every school district?
Oh, the state of New Hampshire. I know that you're doing a lot of comparison with Bedford, and that's something you really should consider. Fifteen years ago, they didn't even have a high school. So about a third of their staff wouldn't necessarily be in the New Hampshire retirement system yet, because they didn't, they were being paid by Manchester West up until about 15 years ago. So think about all the retirements, that's a third of our staff is in the high school, at least. A third of our teachers and probably a quarter of our support staff are in the high school, and that didn't exist 15 years ago in the town next to us, which seems to be the town that we get compared to the most because of the proximity. But they're very different districts in many ways, and that's one big one.
Yeah, they weren't a comprehensive school district, K to 12.
Until?
Until...
About 15 years ago, right?
Oh, I think it's probably even less, less than that, 10 years ago.
And on, I would say, and on top of that with Bedford, they're paying on brand-new facilities for six of their 12 grades. And so they're not paying for roofing, like we are every single year, at about a million dollars. The buildings are more efficient, because they are, they were built more efficiently. And they're paying about a 45-year bond on that, 45-ish?
Yeah, it's around 40, yeah.
So basically, they're paying little payments, and think about, and I always say that to people that ask them, like, "Think about a roof, our roofs are only guaranteed for 35 years, so they'll be paying a mortgage plus a roof while they're still paying the thing off." So they just haven't seen their day yet, because they're paying small amounts on brand-new facilities, versus where we're paying large amounts to maintain old facilities. And that absolutely plays into a lot of what our budget does every year. I saw a hand just fly in the corner of my eye, sorry, Andy. Did I miss anything, from what we've seen as a board perspective?
No, I mean, all that's valid, I mean, it's all there, but you have to look at where we are in the timeframe here. 2008 to 2010, the economy was in the toilet, or whatever, pick your analogy. Things improved, I mean, you saw healthcare costs improving, you got the New Hampshire retirement system, as Matt has explained, changed. The other thing too, is as the economy started to recover, the pool of employees that we draw upon started seeing higher pay for rewards and higher pay for competitive. If you were to look at other school districts and look at their trending of salaries during their agreements, starting in about that 1314 timeframe, they were getting higher increases, which forced us as a district to say, "We either don't give them increases and risk losing instructors, or we try to be competitive with other districts." And one of the things that you're seeing there is that that increase in terms of, what we call loaded costs, salary benefits, all those things, started to turn up a little bit. There were teacher contracts that were approved by the voters over this period of time, which you can go back and look at the Warren articles. The other thing too is that as the population dropped, when you have that flatness there for the, for the budget, that's when we were doing most of the reduction of our teachers. As Mark stated in his budget summary, we're down over 30 teachers from our peak when you get back to this time when we're there. Most of the cutting of teachers were there, and then we leveled off, because as you can see, you had a little bit of a drop, but in general, our population of students is leveled, and as Mark's gonna explain later, is starting to ramp back up for various reasons. So that sort of flattened out our baseline, and then as increases came, as the retirement system, it forced an uptick. Now, this thing looks really like a hockey stick. Unfortunately, there were so many factors that were thrown into there, and when 75 to 80% of our budget is salaries and things that are that way, it is what it is. I mean, I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm not gonna give excuses. It is the economy that we're living in, in the pool of people that we pay, which are highly, highly degreed and is highly competitive in this state in terms of trying to keep and attract teachers, so.
I just wanna play off that point, because Shannon mentioned something that's worth repeating. So, about eight years ago, when the state of New Hampshire required that there be a second criteria for a reduction in force, they did not specify what that criteria would be. And, but they said there needed to be an additional one. So typically, what it's been is the first in is the first out. So when there would be a reduction in force due to a declining enrollment in the past, it would have been the, that, that way, and it would have been fairly simple, was fairly simple. Merrimack wasn't provided, as no district in the state was provided with particular guidance about what that second criteria would be. We opted to have educational attainment be a second criteria. So in other words, points are assigned to a teacher for how long they were employed in the district, and then also for the degree that they had. The idea being that sometimes you could have a very veteran teacher, but that person might not have the education that a somewhat newer person would have. And so, in the old days, that person with more education would have to go, even though they had more, you know, educational experience. What that did was drive an awful lot of teachers to gain credentials. So that was a good consequence for us and the quality of the teachers that we put in front of our students. That also has an impact on the salary of teachers, because there are step increases for when you get certain, when you achieve certain degree status. Bachelors, bachelors plus 15, 30, and so on. So, and that happened in about eight years ago, so it's not an entire factor, but we're talking about a conglomerate of factors. That was just one, and I think it's worth repeating, but it's had a good effect, because we've been able in the last number of years to have our teachers, higher teachers with, sometimes with higher degrees, but also to have our current staff do a lot of professional development that's impacted their pay scale.
So you mentioned that the enrollment is increasing, and I would agree with that statement. But I don't think that we're ever going to be back, at least in the next 10 years, up to where we were at 4,500 or so students. Would you agree with that? I don't know how far you've projected out.
Yeah, so I, I can't, I wouldn't agree or disagree with that. I think what we see is there's a lot of volatility right now in, in, well, in New Hampshire. There, you know, we have a state that's been, the big headline has been, "New Hampshire's an aging state." Well, we have a lot of headlines right now that talk about New Hampshire population is increasing a little bit, but Merrimack, I mean, anybody who lives in Merrimack, you know, has been stuck behind construction. And, and those have, you know, and where construction is being put up throughout the, throughout the district, and that has, we are seeing a result. So, we can, and we will, later on this evening, we'll talk about what our current enrollments are and what we project. But daily, and we have principals here who can attest to that, daily, we have students enrolling in our schools. So I think it would be really, really poor management to estimate what it'll be like in 10 years. But we certainly have a five-year projection that shows us a, an increase, and they name it at 50 to 60. Our, but that's a projection, and projections can be off plus or minus. We're gonna talk to you tonight about how our actuals are.
So the concern that I think that a lot of people will have is, "So we're gonna go up about 50 to 60 students per year," is what they're saying, could be more, could be a little less. On top of that, you're gonna need to hire additional staff, right?
So what you see in this year's, but that's true. What you see in this year's budget is that request. So, what, so I came to, when I came to Merrimack, that was about the same time that the population really began to decline. And so, what happened is, for, for those number of years, every year, there has been a riff. We had at our peak, around the '08-'09 school year, we had about 380 teachers. Right now, we have 350. So in that 10-year time, we have, we have reduced in force 30 full-time staff. Sometimes it's a big headline in other districts, because there's no reduction, no, and then there's a big one, 15 or 10 or something. We've been quiet, we don't discuss it, we don't post it, but we've quietly reduced our staff by 30, and that's been commensurate with the decline. I think what happens in a lot of communities is that there's a period of decline, and then maybe a period of static, and then a period of increase followed at some point in the future. I mean, these tend to, what we understand is these tend to follow some curves. Then there'll be an increase and then a decline again. Right now, we seem to be in that period of increase. And so, I can't forecast for you what our needs will be next year. But right now, the, the factor that has put our proposed budget in excessive default is entirely staff. So had we not done that, we would have been just under last, the default budget, which also means that we've really made some choices about things that we're not doing. And so, but anyway, that's the difference. The 400-plus thousand, which we're over default, is, is equal to the salary that we're, that we're suggesting that we need.
For the additional staff for this year?
Right.
Or for 2020, 2021?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Yep.
So the concern again is that, obviously, we're pushing 81 million now for a proposed budget for the following school year. We start increasing, we're gonna be adding additional staff, and everybody's terrified of the number of 100 million. That's what they're scared of right now. They're scared of getting to that 100 million mark because of what may happen. So... Oh, on average, our, on average, our budget has increased by less than 2% a year. It's gonna take a while to hit 100 million, but there's other factors in play here that are gonna start to level it out. One thing you haven't talked about here is bonded debt. In three years, the high school, I mean, the middle school's paid off in three budget years, it's paid off. We pay off the high school additions at the end of this budget year that we're planning right now. So right there, there's over a million dollars that just disappears off the budget from a capital, from a bonded debt perspective. There's also work that we continue to do in the district by trying to get more, more expensive, more experienced teachers to retire and bring teachers in that aren't as expensive. I think that when you talk about that $3 million that we return to offset taxes, a lot of that's due to reduced salary that we've got. So, the thing that we can't control is the costs that are handed to us. And we can try to control the staff, but we also have state guidelines of how many teachers we have to have based on the number of students. So it's very complex, and I know this looks silly. I mean, it looks like we're, we're not managing things. But when you look at what we as a district need to deliver based on what the voters have wanted us to do and what the number of students are, the economy is not in our favor here. And if you look, I know that when we talked on the phone, we talked about, I mean, if you look at other districts like London Dairy, you look at Portsmouth, you look at similar-sized environments, their budgets aren't that far off from ours, and they've elevated in a similar period of time. So, I wanna make sure that people don't understand we're doing something that nobody else is doing at all, right? So, I mean, that's, I'm not making excuses, I'm saying it's sort of the way it is. I've been looking at this for a while, so.
Thank you.
And I would just add one more thing, 'cause I think when you talk about infrastructure, I did hit on that earlier. We have CIP, and we also project out to '23, '24, I believe, or '24, '25. There's coming to a point where we've done our roofing for the district for the foreseeable future, and the roofing that we are putting in place has a 35-year warranty. So again, you know, when you're talking about a roofing project on average the last few years being a million dollars on this 60-year-old building, we're not gonna see that for another generation. So those things, the boilers, the electrical panels, those things definitely have played into, to those things we have to do, because raining indoors on our classrooms is a terrible, terrible idea. But we've had to be just a step ahead of it, so that we're not, you know, addressing that. I think the middle school is the closest we came to really having an issue, because when it was built, it only had a 10-year roof. So, you know, that wasn't paid off yet, and we're redoing the roof, which is exactly what I talked about earlier. And those are the things that, when you're talking about a million-dollar project, because of, because of the size and scope of what it is, you're not gonna see it every year forever, and that will come back too. So you take back the bonded debt, you take back some of those large capital infrastructures expenditures, and there's gonna be a lot of more base maintenance going on. The buildings will still be more expensive to maintain, because they're older buildings. But we're doing everything we can to achieve whatever efficiencies we can with our upgrades and infrastructure improvements, like natural gas from, from oil. All those things we're doing, we're doing to get guaranteed savings for, for operations. So, so again, you know, when you're talking about, sometimes you have to spend money to save money, we've done some of that as well in prior budgets. Matt?
Could I?
Sure.
Do you mind?
Not at all.
Just kinda interject, seeing we're having a conversation here?
Sure.
We haven't got off the first slide yet.
I know, I know, but, well, this is...
I didn't bring coffee.
This is kinda fun, this is my wheelhouse here, so I'm having a good time. Andy had mentioned something about, you know, the enrollments and our infrastructure and everything like that, and Mark mentioned enrollments going up. I think there's a fear out there that we're gonna have to build another building.
Great.
Right? I've heard, I've heard that. When you look at the buildings we have now during our peak of enrollments, When you look at the buildings we have now during our peak of enrollments, we, we still have that excess capacity. There's around at the middle school, let's see, I'm looking at grades seven and eight, five-hundred-and-sixty-three kids. When we first opened that middle school, we had eight-hundred. So we have capacity. The high school had seventeen-hundred kids in it when we built the three-story addition back in two thousand, two thousand and one. You know, we're looking at a high school right now with probably twelve-sixty-five, so we've got capacity. The only part of the capacity is perhaps at the elementary school levels, but we'll have to see what, what happens there. But as far as growth in the town and population growth in the town and school-age kids, how they all fall, they could either fall, if you have, you have, if you're, if you're driving around town and you're looking at what is going on, you cannot help but notice the massive explosion of workforce housing, as they call it, being approved and put up virtually overnight. All of a sudden, you're driving down whatever it is, you know, to take a ride on Turkey Hill Road, and you're looking there, and you go, oh my God, there's five-hundred units over there. Who's gonna fill those units? That's a question that we have to wrap our head around up to, to, to look into the future. I mean, they, they could have, I think Tim Thompson, when he was here in front of us, says every unit produces point-one-five kids. Okay? Haven't seen a point-one-five kid, but we'll have to see how many units they do produce. But when getting, looking at our actuals, which is gonna come up, which is just a difference between where we were at the beginning of October versus where we are now, there's around a hundred kids who weren't here in October who are here now. So it's something to really be mindful of, and we don't take that lightly, and we're gonna have to do some really good planning. But I, I think our facilities would service well into the future. So when that bonded debt goes away, you're not gonna be looking at another school. You know, we, we spent seventeen million dollars for the middle school, hundred-and-twenty-thousand square feet, eight-hundred kids capacity. I don't know how much Ross Lurgio costs, but I bet you it costs more than seventeen million dollars. Because the whole project was like, with the add-on they did to put furniture in, was probably around fifty-six million dollars. So, you know, there's a lot of factors here, nobody can predict the future. But I think as far as our enrollments go and what we see in the near future, plus what we've done with roofing, that we'll have a span of ten years where we don't have to put a roof on a building, that we're in a pretty good spot. And I could've stretched that chart out to make it not look so steep, but anyway, we're in a pretty good manner to level off at some point. The hundred-million-dollar figure, ah, that's an interesting number. I don't see that happening in my remainder of my tenure here, that's for sure. But then again, who knows how long my tenure here is gonna be?
I was hoping you were gonna say you had twenty years.
No, no. So anyway, I, I'm just trying to give you information, that's, that's all.
And that's exactly what I'm looking for, thank you. So the, the, the next slide that I wanna talk about is gonna fall right into your wheelhouse as well. It's the approved budget versus expended budget. And I, I didn't average anything out, so just looking at it, we're about three million dollars a year that we're giving back to the town. So we're, we're, we're operating well in that aspect. One year, we gave back five million, which was the twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen year. Can you explain why we have to give that money back to the town? And why we budget to have such a large surplus?
Does anyone other than Matt want to answer first? Okay.
First of all, we, we don't budget to have, on a seventy-something-million-dollar budget, what do you have, seventy-six, five-eighty-one?
Yes.
Ah, two-point-six million is not a large surplus at all. That is a surplus that those looking at us from a financial standpoint would deem responsible. It's an indicator that if we have an emergency, and if something goes wrong, we'd have to petition the Department of Education, everything like that, that we have the ability to meet our obligations. Bedford runs a three-million-dollar surplus. Lot of school districts run around a three-million-dollar surplus. The town of Merrimack itself has, on a thirty-something-million-dollar budget, has right now, they, they've built it up over a number of years, has probably a, close to a nine-point-five million-dollar surplus that they're holding, and they use it for tax relief. All the surplus.
Per year, you're saying, per year, right?
In total.
In total, okay.
Total, right now.
Explain, explain the difference between the town and the school first, 'cause it'll make a whole lot more sense if you explain it.
Thank you. You're, you're all like going.
Say this, Matt, say this, man.
This is what Matt's gonna tell you next.
This is what I'm going to say next. The, I worked for a town for nine years. Finance director, town of Hooks, that loved the job, everything like that, wanted to get into a school district, Jaffrey Ridge, couple of years, and then Merrimack, here I am. So when I was on the town side, I had a surplus every single year, and I could retain it. I actually, we used to retain probably less than the recommended amount. The recommended amount, the low part, is around five percent. The high mark is seventeen percent. Merrimack's probably at around ten percent of their, their gross assessed valuation. So they're in a good spot, and I commend them for that. However, when you're a town, you can choose to retain your surplus for emergencies or for cash flow. Cash is big, 'cause back when I first started with the town and the economy wasn't that great, if you'd book a tax warrant, let's say it's for fifty million dollars, you don't collect all fifty million dollars all at once. Maybe you were collecting seventy percent on the dollar. The west, the rest went into arrears, you had to wait for it, so it takes care of your cash flow, and it, it looks good on your balance sheet. Now, the balance sheet portion is very important because our financials get reviewed by Moody's, S&amp;P, all those guys in the stock market. And it shows them that we're a good investment. It also gets combined with the town and the Merrimack Village Water District. So if the town wanted to bond for a fire station, I would have to provide my information to the bonding agency because we're all part of the same unit as investors see it. So if we were running zero surpluses across that line, that says we're just hanging on by the skin of our teeth. We may not have the money to pay our obligation if anything goes wrong. Now, if we're, you know, going into the negative, that's something you cannot do by law. You have to, first of all, the school board chairman would be on the hot seat, right? So.
I'm not right now?
She's not right now. So she has to write a letter to the commissioner of the Department of Ed saying, let's say we were gonna over expend this year's budget. Mark and I were just talking about it, and it's kind of ironic. You would have to know that right now, that you're gonna over expend the eighteen, the nineteen, twenty operating budget. You would have to know now. You would have to write a letter to the Commissioner of Education. They would have to give you approval for, to over expend your budget. They would wanna know why and what went wrong. You would also have to put a warrant article on your ballot for April to raise the money that you need to cover the shortfall. And that would have to be voted in the affirmative to happen. So all those things have to drop in perfect order. Commissioner has to say, okay, warrant article has to pass, you have to know you're gonna over expend now. So that's why it's just better for us to, let's say, okay, our guaranteed maximum's eight-point-five percent. So we budget what the guaranteed maximum is for health insurance. We don't say, you know, this year, I think we're gonna get lucky, I think it's gonna come in at two percent. And so then we put down what our estimated appropriation is, and we hope it's gonna be two percent. What if it comes in at eight-point-five? Now we're short six-hundred thousand dollars, and now you've got a, now you've got a problem. So that's why playing that game, we always try and budget worst-case scenario. And then we look for ways to save money throughout the school year through bidding out services, through shopping for energies, through shopping for natural gas, electricity, oil, whatever we have to do, rubbish disposal, geez, milk and bread, whatever you wanna call it, you know, we go out and we shop these services around. So we budget what we think is at a responsible level, that we can maintain the level of services that we state we're gonna maintain. 'Cause we've made a promise to the voters that if you give us this money, your school district is going to look like this next year. And if we get tight, then what happens is, we have to know it upfront. I'd freeze the budget right away. So there'd be no field trips, there'd be no supplies, there'd be no new purchases, nothing, to try and get this budget in, on, get it to balance in the end. That's what we would try and do. That's a strat, go ahead.
No, I would, no.
That's a strategy that other places has, have done. I, I've seen it, and it's demoralizing, and it's really kind of.
Oh, it's mismanagement, actually, because what would happen is that our bond rating would, would tank, and then, then everybody would, would feel that.
Yeah.
And, and that would just be irresponsible. Can you just briefly just describe the reason that the town, the difference between the town and the school? What it can do with retaining?
So the town can retain surplus. I was supposed to get to that, right?
And the town, the town manager, is the, the town council in Merrimack be the agent to expend the surplus for its needs?
Well, they can put it, they can put it to reduce the tax rate. Or they could use it for emergency purposes if they have an emergency. But they're, they're agents to expend.
And the difference between them and the town is, I mean, and the school?
The school and the town is, we have to give all ours back. So if we budget with worst-case scenario in mind, and then work to keep the expenditures down, we are in a position that anything that doesn't get spent goes back to reduce the next year's tax rate.
So, but we can actually, and there's a caveat, we can technically retain a surplus, but.
We need a warrant article.
There's a warrant article so that the voters, which we haven't asked you to do for very good reasons, which we'll get to, the voters would have to say, yes, school district, you can retain a surplus. But the surplus can only be used for a couple of things, which I'll, I'll get to you in a moment on. So we have very specific things the surplus could be used for, and to, we, as the school board, would not be the agents to expend. So on those very specific items, which I'm gonna make sure that you clarify, 'cause I, I always miss one, it, we would have to actually petition, there are two items. We would have to petition the Department of Education or the Department of Revenue Administration.
Um, both.
Both, both. To be able to say, we need money from our surplus to spend on one of these two items that we are legally allowed to use that surplus for, and nothing else. We can't use it to reduce taxes, we can't use it to put, you know, new bleachers in, we, we have to use it for very specific things, and those two things are.
You can use it for emergency purposes if you show the emergency, and you can use it for tax rate stabilization.
But it has to go through the D, the Department of Education and Department of Revenue Administration.
And everything like that.
We can't do it. Not the way the town council can do it, we can't do it. We'd have to go through the process and, and petition, spend all our time in Concord.
But that, that's the one thing that, working for a school district that I miss is, that's the, probably the only thing. But you don't have the flexibility of having a year, let's say when we had the middle school, right? And we had the million-dollar roof that we had to put on that middle school. Because we only had seventeen million dollars to build it, so we were held to a price point. So we had to value engineer that building, and part of that was putting on a TPO vinyl roof. And so that's what we did. We didn't expect it to go when it did. Usually a ten-year warranty, you're gonna get at least fifteen years out of it, but it, it didn't, that wasn't the case. So we're looking at that large expenditure. So if we were holding on to, if you go back there, one of those years, the five-million-dollar surplus, if we were holding on to that five-million-dollar surplus, it would've been nice if we could have petitioned DRA and the DOE to let a million dollars flow from that surplus to reduce the amount of the tax burden due to replacing the million-dollar roof. It would've been nice to have that flexibility, so.
So you mentioned that there's reasons that you wouldn't want to be the expender of the money or whatever you said.
Well, no, that we would, the thing is, not having the, being the agents to expend, we would have to send our administrators, instead of doing their daily jobs, up to Concord to have hearings and ask for the money that we ask the taxpayer to save on our behalf. And again, so we don't feel that's a good use of our time and our resources when this has been stable. Because again, when you have a consistent amount, less than two thousand and fifteen, a stable amount going back, that doesn't create a dip in the spike, 'cause it's close to the same amount within a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty thousand. The one year that we gave more back, I believe, was the LGC.
It was the health insurance settlement.
Right, so our health, when the LGC went, had to close based on some management issues they had, they overcharged us, and we got our money back. So when we got our money back, we gave it back to the taxpayer. That's that money. Plus, I believe that was the same year we were quoted a high guaranteed maximum rate for our health insurance. And it came in significantly lower than the GMR we have to budget on to be responsible and cover the, the worst-case scenario bill. So those two things created a unique two-million-dollar windfall that went straight back to the taxpayer.
So let me, let me make sure I'm understanding this. So state law says that you can, if the voters approve, you can hold, I don't think you gave me a percent, two and a half.
Two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent of your budget.
Yeah.
But you can't really use it unless you jump through hoops and they put the last one on fire.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, correct, yeah.
Which is, which is fundamentally different than the rules that apply to the town.
So that's why we've never asked, 'cause it just didn't seem like, since things have been consistently managed with that consistent, other than the anomaly year surplus, you haven't seen the dip in the, in the spike from your tax rate because that money, that, that surplus has been a consistent number. So, and we're all about avoiding dips and spikes.
Okay, thank you. The remainder of the slides are kinda, kinda go together, so I'll, I'll run through those, and then we can have some discussion surrounding it. So I've, I've compared enrollment in eighteen, nineteen from the state website to various districts within the area. I tried to, to choose those directly surrounding us. So you'll see that Merrimack is just slightly above the, the middle of the run there. Little over thirty-six-hundred, I believe, is where that one was for twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. When we look at the student-to-teacher ratio on the state website, we are at the bottom of the list, which would be twelve-point-nine students-to-teacher ratio. Now, I completely understand that that is not how many students are sitting in every class, I've got that, okay? But what this would tell me potentially, and, and I'm looking for, for input from, from all of you, what this would tell me is that there is a potential for a reduced number of, of teachers compared to some of the other surrounding districts. When we're at twelve-point-nine compared to Milford at fourteen, we won't say the B-word, but we'll go to Wyndham at fourteen-point-two. If you look at it, I'm sure from the layperson and the, and the public, you could probably see how we would think that way. But we'll hold that one, and we'll go to the next one, which is total teachers and average salary for twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. So according to the state website, we have two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-point-eight teachers, and we're hovering right around sixty thousand in average teacher salary. Again, I, I recognize that the way that they're paid, the more tenure they have, the more education and experience they have, the more that's gonna cost. So this is taking a little bit of everybody and putting it in, in the pot. However, um, when you look at, say, Hudson, which I've been told that the two districts that you may really wanna consider to compare us to would be Hudson and London Dairy. So London Dairy's paying more than we are. Hudson's paying less than we are. Um, and then if, if you just look across the board, you'll see, you know, the numbers, they vary based upon, on where everybody's at. The thing that I'm finding interesting is this slide right here. This is the cost per student, cost per pupil, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, from the state's website. We're running at the top of the list here compared to London Dairy. So if we look at the bottom of the list, we have Goffstown, and you've got Bedford and Hudson, Wyndham, Milford, Merrimack, London Dairy. How in the world are these other districts educating their students at such low costs compared to what we are doing?
Could I just make a couple comments about the numbers? Um, when you look at the chart that I have in front of me, the state average is sixteen thousand, three forty-six. So we're right at the state average. And I looked at Bedford thirteen nine oh two, I don't know if you have that.
Yes, thirteen nine oh two.
Yeah, thirteen nine oh two oh nine, yeah. So that, that, that's on here there. Um, I can't, from, from a, from a, a logic point of view, I don't understand how Bedford's three thousand dollars less than the state average. And like the top school in the entire state, according to, to Newsweek, Niche, and some other kind of reports that are out there as far as naming them number four, number two, or whatever the heck it is. Uh, I don't put much stock in that, but if, from a logic standpoint, I just, I just can't see where, I can see where Hudson's fourteen thousand. Uh, but Bedford, I don't know. But, uh, the, we're, Merrimack, you say we're at the top of the list, we're right at the state average.
Well, we're at the top of the list for the schools that I grabbed.
For this, for this group, yes, which is a good group to compare. So I don't know if you wanna say anything, Mark, I just wanted to mention that.
Uh, no, I, I, if, if I could just ask you to go back to the other slide, please? Um, so this comes from the state website?
Yes.
So I just would point out, um, that, um, if that's suggesting that the total teachers in Merrimack are two seventy-eight.
That's wrong.
That's actually factually inaccurate. I mean, we have.
We're three fifty-five.
Three hundred and fifty or so. So, so I raised that only because, I mean, I, I think I'd prefer you all to think we had two hundred and seventy-eight teachers. But we actually have three hundred and fifty teachers.
Yeah.
So I, I just, I don't know where they got that number. We didn't feed that number to them. That causes me therefore to have not a lot of faith in other numbers that, that this, and I'm not, you know, I mean, look, I have enough to take care of my business. I'm just telling you that that's wrong, and therefore I don't know what else is right or wrong.
Yeah, I can't.
So I don't, I don't know what to tell you. The, uh, the other factor though, that I will say, which is true for every district, is every district has its own unique needs. Um, when you create a cost per pupil, you take the total budget and you divide. So, um, so we have expenses that some districts don't have. We also have, other districts have expenses that we don't have. So I completely understand the impulse to compare. But in order to be fair about the comparison, you would have to know so much more at a granular level about what are the, you know, everything from, as Chair Barnes was talking about, um, everything from the infrastructure needs in a town that has fifty-year-old buildings versus a town that has fewer buildings of that age and what it takes. I mean, in my budget message, I refer to the fact that in ten years, we've had ten million dollars in capital projects that we've done. That's a conservative estimate, um, that might not, um, be true for another district. Um, and just so many other factors. So I completely understand the reason for doing that. Um, but, um, in order to really make sense of that, there would have to be a point by point comparison. Infrastructure costs, student need co, you know, uh, salary, um, contracts, you know, just everything. That would make more sense to me. So I can explain that. I just would say to you that that number is factually inaccurate, and so therefore, I don't, I just don't know. I'm not saying these are wrong, but I just don't know. That other number is just flat out wrong.
So do you recall what you had at the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year for teachers?
Probably three fifty.
In tw, well, um.
Last year.
In, in eighteen nineteen, it was probably, that was closer to, I think that was like three fifty-three. We are at just about three fifty right now. Yeah.
So that's interesting. Um, and I, I look at this, and I know you're gonna be covering it shortly, but, um, I, I, you know, some of the information that is on here doesn't necessarily match the state website either. But at the same time, I'm sure that there's some way that they're calculating what a teacher is, or what a student is, or whatever the case may be. And I'm assuming, maybe I shouldn't, that they're applying that level throughout all the school districts. Now, I don't know that to be a fact, I didn't write it, couldn't tell you, I know you didn't either.
Yeah.
However, I would say that, um, I would encourage, uh, the school district and or school board to maybe vet that out a little bit further, because as taxpayers, that's what we're looking at. We do get some information off of the Merrimack website, but the reality is that a lot of it will come from the state because it does contain much more robust data.
Mr. Adler, I would like to just point to your attention, we have two state reps in the room right now, so.
Excellent.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So, um, the last slide that I have, round of applause, please, is, um, the full-time employees twenty eighteen, nineteen. And we've got Merrimack at six sixty-two, and we've got London Dairy at six eighty, we've got Bedford at six seventy-five. The others three are really kind of irrelevant because of the numbers. Again, going back to the question prior, which is how can Bedford, how can, um, other communities educate their students for much lower costs when they have more people and more students for that matter? So more staff and more students. I know we don't wanna compare to Bedford, I got it, and unfortunately it is just up the road. I do understand it does have additional, a different socio-economic demographics. I understand they have newer school, uh, buildings, et cetera. But at the end of the day, they're doing something right, because they're educating students at a cost of three grand less than what it's costing us.
So I'm just gonna point out to you again, that number six sixty-two point eight is just wrong. Uh, the number is, um, I can get that to you tomorrow, but I would tell you that the number is closer to seven hundred and fifty, a little bit.
Seven fifteen?
Five oh.
Seven five.
Uh, and it might be just a little in excess of that. Um, so again, you know, full disclosure, transparency. I would love you to think that that number was six sixty-two, it's not. And so again, I would tell you, is six seventy-five the right number? If it's not the right number for Merrimack, I'm gonna bet it's not the right number for others.
Sure.
I don't know where the state gets its numbers. I've been the superintendent since July. Nobody has ever called me from the state and asked for that information. So I don't know. Uh, and again, I'm not, this is not about saying, oh, the state, they're busy people and they're very short-staffed, so kudos for all the work that they do. I'm just telling you factually, that number is wrong.
Do, you, you've mentioned earlier, we don't have anybody that submits data to the state?
Uh, we do.
We do.
But I don't know what they did with what we sent them, and nobody's asked me. So yes, I, I don't know. I don't know if there's a lag. You know, I'm, I'm, again, I, I don't, I don't want to be critical of the state, but when we're, when we're being asked to defend some numbers.
Sure.
I'm also not gonna be quiet.
Of course.
Um, I'm, so, you know, we, we have more employees than that.
So their data was updated in March of this year, was according to the website, so.
Yeah.
I, I would, uh, as I am going to do, I would implore the schools
Mm-hmm.
to reach out and find out what's going on, as, as I'm gonna do the same.
Mm-hmm.
I've had dialogue with the, the state today, actually, regarding some of their reports, so, um, but I'll, I'll ask more questions.
Yeah, well, as we, as, as will we, yeah. Mm-hmm, for sure.
I, I appreciate all of your time, I appreciate the open dialogue. Um, it has been helpful. Um, I, I hope that, uh, we can educate the public, get more people involved. Um, I would encourage you to consider holding what I would call a town hall meeting. And I, I recognize that there's a limitation that you have on certain number of board members in a room at the same time kinda thing. Hope you all don't go to Six Flags all at once, anyway.
As long as we're not talking board business, it's not about board business.
Perfect, okay. So I, I, I would suggest considering a town hall meeting maybe twice a year where, um, the school principals, the superintendent, et cetera, maybe come in with a couple of board members and you can rotate them around and just give the public opportunity to ask some questions. Maybe somebody will show up, maybe they won't, I don't know, but it's just a suggestion, this.
Yeah, Andy?
So first of all, I'd like to say that I'm pleased to see so many people here that's caring about the budget. I've been doing this job for thirteen years in the, the Budget Committee of the School Board. This is the first time more than two people have shown up to a budget discussion. Okay? People think that we sit here and make this crap up. We don't. We want input. We want people to understand what's going on. Every one of our meetings is recorded, done, all this information is shown every year. And I, having it, if a town hall or a town meeting or some discussion twice a year is what it takes to get people involved and listening and understanding and gives us ideas, that's great. But I wanna make sure people don't understand we've been behind a black curtain for the last X number of years, okay? I just, I just wanna make sure, because as you know, in talking with me, I'll share anything, discussion points, talking, whatever. But we have to be careful how we do it, can't do it on social media, just doesn't work that way.
Scott, the, the thing we worry about as elected officials is transparency. And if we send a couple of people in that are representing the board, and as you see, we have a lot of dialogue at our, our meetings and, you know, we, we come with, from different approaches on, on, to get to kinda where we are in our votes. So sending in, um, a person here, a couple of people there, that's not representative of the board. Board meetings represent the board. And I think that's really important, that, you know, it lacks transparency when you have town hall meetings off camera uh, to talk board business. It's, it's just not the most responsible way of doing business for us. Because, you know, we are dealing with the community's children and the community's assets. Um, so we, we have to be very careful about our transparency. And, um, we are always gonna be very cautious about that for the right reasons. Um, Naomi, did you have your hand up too? And I think, Mark, after that.
That said, it's not that tough to get on the agenda. And then it's on camera, and it's a discussion that happens, and that's something that the community is more than welcome to do.
And Mark?
So I just, I'm not under those same constraints. And, and, and so I'm very eager to do that. And, and I shared with you that I think you can expect that. Um, because it is a good dialogue and, you know, and we've got two interests. We, I mean, I will sleep well at night owning every second that I do care about the kids in this district and whatever it takes to, to teach them as best we can, that's what I'm gonna do. But that doesn't mean at the same time that I, and we are not concerned about the impact on taxpayers. I live in Nashua, I'm a taxpayer too. I have a child, two children, one just graduated, and the other's in a, in Nashua South. I worry about my taxes, I worry about whether the cost is being, the cost, my, my money is being used properly. So we're not that different. Um, so the dialogue is really helpful, and I'm gonna do whatever I can to try to, you know, encourage that and answer questions, tell you I don't know what I don't know. So I'm not under those same constraints, but I can share. And so I appreciate the, uh, the thought, and I think you'll see something like that happen.
Thank you. In regards to the, the town hall that I was, um, in, in regards to your comment back that it's, it may not be appropriate. Uh, I think what's important to understand is that, some of the feedback that I've heard is that administrators and, and board members don't wanna be looked at as unapproachable. They don't wanna be looked at as, um, well, behind a dark curtain, if you will. So the more that the public can be involved in, in asking questions, the better it's going to be for all parties involved. And I understand that you've gotta be careful what you post, but I've, I've had offers from, you know, two members on the school board to sit down and have coffee. Well, what's the difference if I sit down and have coffee with two people in a, in a Dunkin' Donuts? Or if I sit down, i- if you're standing here waiting for somebody to come in and ask questions?
Cause it's a posted meeting, it's a posted gathering, and it would be specific to district business. That's the difference. So if you have a question, I can answer a question for you. If the community has a question, then that's, that's considered like, it's kinda like having a mini-meeting. And if being, being that it's a, a public collection, that's, that's not representing the board responsibly.
Interesting, okay. The other thing that I would suggest is that, um, I'm a believer that the, the, potentially the public is largely unaware, for whatever reason, what is actually occurring. And I think that might be one of the reasons that for the last, I believe you said thirteen years, Andy, that, uh, you know, you've never had more than two people come to a meeting like this. I, I think that more that, the more that we can do to get the word out there, besides just posting it on a website, I think is important. You know, potentially partnering with the town and getting it posted somewhere. There's reader boards all over the place, you know? Anything that we can do that, that won't cost, uh, any money that's already out there, resources that we have, might be a good way to get the public involved.
Andy?
So that's a good segue, because I will advertise right now that starting tonight, then tomorrow night, then next week, then the week after, then the week after that, the school board for the next two weeks or so, and followed by the Budget Committee, will be discussing every nuance of the budget that we're talking about right now. We had our first discussion right before Christmas for three departments. Tonight, we're gonna talk about the elementary and the upper elementary school. Tomorrow night, a lot of meat and potatoes, middle school, high school, district-wide, and special ed will be discussed. Then we get into the discussion of what we want the, the budget to look like before we hand it off to the Budget Committee. They then review the budget, what's it gonna be like when it goes to the recession, and what's it gonna be like for the voters? So we're at the very beginning of the process, and these meetings is how we're gonna share. So if you can be here, if you can watch it on recording, whatever, this is how you'll know what's in our heads and what's being presented. And questions that you may ask based on, I mean, there's two public participations. There's up at the beginning and then at the end based, of a meeting, based on the agenda items. If people have questions, we can't answer them, but if they have questions or comments at the end of a meeting, we'd love to hear them because it's part of our digestive process of the, of the budget, so. Uh, certainly use what we're going into now. We don't have a town hall planned, but we do have these meetings, so that's important to know.
And I would say furthermore too, you can send the board your questions, or you can reach out, all of, you can send it to us collectively. Um, we typically will come back at the next meeting and ask if we've had any correspondence. Um, we try to list what that correspondence is, but we can certainly get you questions that you want answered. If you wanna send it to the whole board, you'll likely hear back from Shannon. If you wanna send it to, um, one board member, you can do that too, but we will get your questions answered.
And when you say, you know, you bring it back, is that something that you, you say publicly, this is the question that was asked, and this is what we?
We'll do, we'll say, and you'll, we have correspondence later, and it'll just be, we heard from a constituent that they had a question about
Okay.
the high school mascot.
Got it.
And actually, that is my correspondence for later. Um, so, but on that note, it won't be saying, you know, Steve App, called me, or Scott Adler called me and said he wanted to know about, that, we would not put you out like that. So we keep it generic. But then the next thing we've been doing the last couple of years is say, and this is what we did about the request that we got. So if it's Scott Adler was asking about, um, the cost of health insurance, and I, um, directed his, um, inquiry to the director of, or the director, sorry, the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent of Business, to answer those questions about, um, health insurance guaranteed maximum rates. So we always try to say, who asked, not, like, what kind of question was asked, and how we address that, that constituent's questions. And we'll always do that. But we won't necessarily say it was you that asked.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. We are onto item number four, which is the updated information concerning student enrollments in the Merrimack School District. We promised you it was coming, so, Scott. And so I turn the mic over to Mark and Matt, thank you.
Yep, so I'm just gonna, uh, briefly, uh, share a little bit while Matt sets up. So, um, because it's very, very important that, um, the board understands, um, as well as the community understands, um, all the factors that go into the budget as it's constructed, it's, one of the major parts of that is enrollment. And so it has been true for nearly ten years. that our enrollments have been on the decline. That has been well captured by the public imagination and well understood. What has been less understood, for which I think we in administration take some responsibility, is that there has been a steady increase in enrollment, um, starting a few years ago. That increase in enrollment has spiked up. So, the way that the budget is constructed relative to planning for whether we need to have a reduction force or additional teachers is based on enrollments as of October first. The reason for that is because we have to by law give the board a budget on the first Monday in December. And so what that requires is that we need time to know what are we dealing with, um, in terms of our student enrollment. So, we call it on October first and then we project, but what's important to remember is we're projecting a year out for a reality that we know only partly about on October first. So, our projection for four additional teachers is based on both our October first enrollments, coupled with our projections, um, our demographic protection, projections. Right? That's what we based our four, our request for our teachers on. What we want to share with you tonight is that those are projections and we've got actual numbers that I think help to portray the reality that we are actually encountering. So, that's the setup for why we want to talk to you tonight so that you get to talk about actual numbers as we experience them and as our principals experience them daily. So, Matt?
Yep. At your place and on the table, if anybody's interested, and I'll post this online so everybody can see it. The first sheet that you're looking at, that's the sheet that was in the budget message as far as enrollments go. So that's the October first numbers that were provided to you. And so we were talking and we were saying, well, what does it, what does it look like now? And so when I went into Power School, I'm looking, I was looking back in October of a total enrollment of three thousand eight hundred and four kids. I am looking right now at three thousand nine hundred and thirteen kids for this year. Oh, no, you pause, yeah.
What I want to just make clear is that since October first, we've had an increase of one hundred and nine students in the Merrimack School District since October first. The October first number was, uh, the October first number was three thousand, um, three thousand eight hundred and four. The number now as of January sixth is three thousand nine hundred and thirteen. So, go ahead. I just wanted to drive that point home.
Yeah, and so, so hence, looking at the thirty-eight oh four number from the beginning of October, we projected three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. But we're already at, bless you, we're already at three thousand nine hundred and thirteen. So, our projection that was done months ago in order to craft this budget, our current enrollment already outstrips the number that we're using for the projection for next year. So our next year projection is three thousand nine hundred and fifty-four. So, again, an increase and we've been hearing this from the elementary school principals, we've been hearing it from a lot of people, especially at the elementary school level, that, um, you know, the enrollments have been, have been going up in certain, in certain grade levels due to, you know, the workforce housing that was built. Uh, Thornton's Ferry especially has been talking to us about that. Julie's been saying that every time she sees me, Matt, we're getting more kids in, we're getting more kids in. So she didn't, doesn't let me forget. But the thing is, you know, we've, we've built the budget and I'm not talking about redoing anything. I just want you to be aware that the spiral down has ended. We're going to hit a slow plateau that will perhaps at the end of five years, I've got projections here, that we're looking at, you know, forty-one sixty-four as far as kids going. So we're getting back into the four thousands from a low of almost thirty-six hundred. So, that's an extra four hundred kids in a, in a few years. So luckily we do have the facilities to, to handle them, but it is something for you to be made aware of. And I pulled these off of Power School this morning. And like I said, the number came in at thirty-nine thirteen and we were looking at a couple of months ago at thirty-eight oh four. So that's, uh, is it a signi-, it's a significant increase, but it's not, it's not one that we can't.
Right. So I'll just point out district-wide, we're plus fourteen at first grade, plus six at second grade, plus five at third grade, plus six at fourth grade, plus five at fifth grade, plus eight at sixth grade, plus seven at seventh grade, plus twelve at eighth grade. And, um, and I'll, I'll finish the high school in a minute, but we'll post this tomorrow. But I mean, those are just our actual numbers, which our principals will say comports with, I mean, they put that in when a person comes and says they'd like to register a child. So, um, so anyway.
Yep.
Go ahead. We're happy to answer any questions that you have.
I mean, one of the questions that I have when we look at the increase of staffing, I mean, of the increase of enrollment is, I think more of the latter part of what you just said, at what grade levels it's happening. Because, as you know, if it were equally distributed, um, there may not be enough of a increase in any place to add staffing. So, you know, I think as we look closely at that information, I know that I will want to understand more about the staffing that we're asking for, why we feel we need that staffing in that particular grade level, um, and then what those increases in those grade levels were. Cause the overall increase doesn't necessarily tell me that we need to add staffing. Similarly, if we were to decrease in the same manner.
Yep.
Um, that doesn't necessarily tell me unless there is a significant enough of an increase at one particular grade level. So I just wanted to make that, make sure we're aligned there.
Yeah, one hundred percent. And in fact, um, many of the board members, as you know, because you were one, asked questions right along those lines. And so, um, between tonight and tomorrow night, we'll answer that for you.
Thank you.
I think you can keep going.
Oh, I think we're set. We're just happy for whatever questions.
So there are other questions from the board? Okay. I got a little bit of my voice back. So sorry for that, um, if it was distracting to you.
I think, I'm sorry, I think Andy made.
Andy does, okay. Sorry.
Well, so this is the first time I've seen these numbers and people in the back, you've probably seen this spreadsheet with these numbers on it. Your total shows you've gone up by a hundred and what, you said?
Hundred and nine.
Hundred and nine. When I'm adding the pieces together, the high, is the high school numbers really that's, I mean, I'm seeing the eleventh grade go from three eleven to three twenty-seven. They're typos in the spreadsheet maybe? Are they accurate? Cause the numbers, if I read all the individual lines across, you've got more than a, it shows an increase of a hundred and fifty-seven rather than a hundred and whatever, a hundred and whatever in your planning. You look at the highlighted line on the bottom of the second page in yellow.
Yep, that's correct.
Under the difference column, it says one fifty-seven. And, oh, I guess that's compared to the previous one. Okay.
It's compared, it's compared to the previous one.
I'm, I'm just trying to digest this sitting here. I mean.
But there was, there was a jump at the, the actuals, there was a jump at the high school. Three twenty-seven, three thirty-seven, three nineteen, two seventy-four.
So the request that you've given us for staffing, which we're going to talk about in a couple of minutes, was largely at the elementary schools, right? Um, so it doesn't surprise me to see what you've described. What surprised me is at the high school level. And my question back to you would be, is there a way that you can demographically look at, are these coming out of the housing that is being built, the apartment-type housing? Is it coming out of single-family homes? Is there a way that you can demographically break down the increase just so we, cause it's going to help us over time to understand what's influencing it. I mean, I've lived in Merrimack for over fifty years and I know the demographics of the town have cycled in and out as, as students have gotten older, they've grown away and then new families come in and then you get younger kids. It's like a, you know, sort of like a sine wave almost. Um, it'd be good to understand whether we're going into a point where single-family homes are generating more students of all ages or whether we're seeing a build-in from the, the other housing. I mean, it's just, it's something you might be able to provide us some data based on where you think they're coming.
We certainly can try to do that. I mean, a lot of that information would come from, uh, some of that information would come from the town. Something that's, that's not discussed much, um, and I'm looking at Mrs. DeLuca because, um, she is the principal of the school that might be most impacted by this, is the number of, um, students who come to us living in, um, long-term residence, like, uh, uh, I don't know how you'd describe it, uh, long-term, long, long-term stay.
Extended stay.
Extended stay.
Yes.
Um, we have, and, and that's very hard to, um, to, uh, to speculate, uh, demographically. Um, so that's just one of the things. I can, I can work with the town to try to get you the answers to what you said.
It'd just be good, I mean, to see, are we seeing a trend up with younger families moving in and therefore we're going to see more of a fundamental buildup or if it's another thing that's driving it. It would just be good to understand.
Yep, yep, yep.
Cinda?
I mean, it's been a few years since we've had Tim Thompson back in front of us and I think it's probably on a future agenda, a good idea to get him back to talk to us about these very topics.
I could tell it was two years ago because I was in Sonoma for work and got sick and couldn't make it back. So, I remember exactly where he was.
Yep.
So, any other questions? Alma? Okay, so we are on to the, um, formal hearing on the elementary school budgets. So I invite to the, uh, table leadership from Reed's Ferry Elementary, Thornton's Ferry Elementary and Master Cola Elementary. And, uh, tonight will be led by the principals, Kimberly Yarlot from Reed's, Michelle Romaine from Master Cola, Julie DeLuca from Thornton's, and their, uh, assistant principals, Bonnie Painschod, uh, I believe you're from Reed's. And welcome, this is your first year in budgets. So welcome to the Merrimack School District. Alicia Hansen Prue, uh, from Master Cola. And then Michaela Champlin, also, um, first year with us, uh, from Thornton's and welcome to the Merrimack School District in your first budget cycle. So, um, I think, uh, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much and thanks for doing the introductions. Again, I'm Kimberly Yarlot, principal of Reed's Ferry School and Bonnie Painschod, assistant principal of Reed's Ferry School. To my left, I have Julie DeLuca, who's the principal of Thornton's Ferry School and her assistant principal, Michaela Champlin. And to my right, um, principal Michelle Romaine from Master Cola Elementary School and assistant principal Alicia Hansen Prue. So thank you, um, for those, those introductions and thank you for having us to, so that we can provide you with an overview of our proposed two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school budget. Um, just as, as a brief overview, um, and, um, an introduction to our budgets is that, um, as in with the past, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget proposals for the three elementary schools continues to reflect the priorities established in the Merrimack School District logic model by maintaining progress in the areas of literacy, numeracy and school climate. The budgets also reflect the need to be fiscally responsible and to strive for minimal budgetary implications. The three elementary school administrators worked closely with one another to establish the collective priorities. Common to all three of the budgets is the, um, ongoing furniture replacement account, which reflects the priority of replacing classroom student desks and chairs and worn-out furniture such as bookcases, tables and coat closets. Also common to the three lower elementary school proposed budgets is the, um, a reduced bottom line for each budget, um, in comparison with the, uh, to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget. This dis- decrease is due to a pause in the purchase of curriculum materials, specifically the Envisions math program and second step social emotional program. So we want to thank you again for examining our budgets and providing us with clarifying questions in advance to tonight's, uh, meeting. And I'm just going to read through the questions, provide responses and then at the end invite you to, um, ask any further clarifying questions. Okay? So I'm going to start with some general questions that were provided to us before going into specific board member questions. Um, so the first question, um, that comes to us has to do with the field trip accounts and those are, um, do you want me to read the account numbers for each one?
Um, I don't, I think it's a generic overall because that's my question about, um,
The field trip, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's applicable to all schools and all types of field trips.
Okay. So the question that was asked is please break out what the district covers and what the school covers for field trips. The district field trip accounts for the three lower elementary school covers the cost of transportation, which is broken into the standard mileage rate and for next year that is, um, two dollars and eighty-five cents per mile and the wait time. So that's the time that the buses stay on site and that's thirty-one dollars an hour. So, um, the monies would cover that as well as any chaperone fees that would, um, be requested for admissions to any particular venue. The next question is please provide a percentage of students participating in these field trips at the three lower elementary school. Unless a student is absent, it's a hundred percent participation. Um, please explain in detail how we assure that those unable to pay due to financial hardship are not excluded from going on field trips. And the response is every child is included in all field trips regardless of the family's ability to pay. The schools collect the fees for the trips and then supplement as needed. And in some cases, school funds come from parent donations. Sometimes a parent will pay double the cost or just write a flat field trip fee, um, discretionary check. Um, administrators might, um, contribute a sunshine fund in some, some cases, an over expenditure of the account, of a specific field trip account or field trip experience which is later reconciled. So we might over expend and under expend at a, a particular field trip based on the number of, um, based on what comes in from transportation and number of chaperones. Um, the next question is please explain how we assure those students who are in food unstable households, um, are fed when on field trips and how their privacy is protected if they're unable to bring a lunch or a snack on these outings. So teachers ensure every child has a lunch and a snack. They'll have, all the kids put their things out and raise your hand if you have this and raise your hand if, if that. And if it's discovered that a child does not have a lunch, we send them down to the cafeteria or we'll send an adult down to the cafeteria and have a lunch made, um, prior to them leaving for the field trip. So no child would ever go without food. Okay, so, um, another general question is about furniture. And, um, I just wanted to point out that, um, there were several questions about furniture that came from specific board members and then there's this general question. So if your question is not recognized later in our presentation, it's because it was encapsulated into this, this particular, um, question. So, this question is, why does school furniture like bookcases, bookcases, cabinets and closets cost more than basic consumer furniture? So I'm going to, I'm going to start off answering this and then invite Matt Chevanel to offer any further explanation. Um, since he's more of an expert in that field. Um, school furniture requires adherence to strict fire codes and regulations. And of course, all carpets have to be, um, have fire coating tags or they're removed from the building. And we also have to, um, purchase very durable furniture that is within these codes. Uh, additionally, it's important to note that furniture gets excessive wear and tear. In addition to teacher and student use, there are many community organizations that use schools after hours. And I believe you have a list from our use of facilities report from maintenance that describes the number, which is quite high, of, um, outside, um, agencies that will use the school and be moving the furniture around and using the classroom spaces and the gym, et cetera. And what is the average lifespan, lifespan of the furniture under typically heavy utilization that you would find in a school? I have to say that, um, Reed's Ferry School and Thornton's Ferry School just turned fifty years old. And just within the last ten years, well, we've started to replace the desks, replace the library furniture. So we're kind of on our second, uh, use, it's our second, um, purchase of, of furniture that has really, um, outlived its purposes. We, when we, we keep coming back and asking for desks and tables and chairs because we've always asked for just a little bit, maybe two classes a year. Um, but we're finding that we have really good long usage out of those as, as evidence of us just asking for art tables that were fifty years old or close to fifty years old and library furniture that was close to fifty. I'm going to pause there and, and ask. So I'm going to pause there and ask Matt if you have anything to add to that description.
Yeah, I do.
Just, Matt, if you could, just before you do that, I'm sorry. Once again, we're just riffing tonight.
I know you are.
So I just wanted to also just point out, it's very important to point this out. What Kim just said is that much of the furniture that we have is 50 years old. I want to just kudos to our maintenance department because those, that furniture that we have, and everything that we have, we have boilers that have long exceeded their lifespan. We have all kinds of infrastructure that has far exceeded its lifespan because of our maintenance crew for years. They weld and weld and weld until they cannot weld, and I mean, until they literally cannot weld anything anymore. We do not just, you know, discard something because it doesn't look pretty. We use it until it's dead. That's the truth. And there is a certain point at which safety really matters. We can't be having jagged edges and little kids sitting on jagged edges and ripping their pants or worse, their legs and risking injury. So I just would take this opportunity to thank our maintenance crew because they have saved our district money, and they have provided safe and secure infrastructure for our students and teachers. And so at such time as 50 years and that something says I give up, that's not a, I mean, we would say that that's a request that has been forestalled because of the work of our maintenance crew. So, Matt, I'm sorry, I just wanted to throw that out. Thanks.
No, that's okay. Thank you. What we have is, every single year, we have an inspection by the Fire Marshal's Office who go through our buildings stem to stern. And in front of you is a memo from the State of New Hampshire Division of Fire Safety. And there's a blue paragraph that I highlighted that says, although the desire to bring a touch of home into the classroom is understood, very few of the furniture and draperies that you would want in your home are suitable for classrooms. There are strict requirements for furniture and draperies, fire retardant abilities, and resistance to resist ignition. In addition, the foam cushions must be resistant to flame spread and be certified to comply with strict regulations. Unless the documentation for the furniture can be provided and approved by the local fire department, it cannot be allowed in the classroom. So you can't go to Sam's Club, you can't go to Big Lots, you can't go to wherever you want to go, buy a bunch of chairs, put them in a classroom, and call it good. You have to have furniture that meets certain specifications as far as its material, its build quality. We need furniture with at least, you know, a 10- to 15-year warranty. We have a lot of utilization. You are thinking that this is perhaps my budget book, wouldn't you say? Looks like a budget book, but it is not. This is a list of all the facility use requests from the beginning of the year until the end of December. This is double-sided. There's probably 2,000 pages in here. These facilities that we have are used as a community resource all the time. And if you don't put in furniture, fixtures, whatever, I can pass it along. It's a lot of summer school stuff at the beginning. But, you know, we're looking at stuff like, you know, the striker club meeting. We're looking at robotics practice. We're looking at MMS chair or wrestling practice in MYA. We're looking at items like adult ed conversational German. You know, the adult ed program is very big. We're looking at the first Lego League. We're looking at MYA practice. We're looking at the SNU graduate program. We're looking at a lot of items that utilize our facilities during the evening and have a lot of traffic in our classrooms and our buildings. It's kind of like, let's say you're really fancy and you have a big dining room table for eight, and you've got it at Bernie and Phil's. How'd you like to have 200 kids come through, get up and down, up and down, up and down, move the chairs, everything like that, every single day for 186 days? What do you think that dining room set's going to look like? Not going to look that great. So that's why we have to buy commercial-grade furniture, because of the durability, because of the utilization of our facilities, into the evening, from the beginning, beginning of the morning, because we have a before-school program in a lot of our schools, into the evening, on the weekends, whenever it's possible, district meeting, deliberative session, whatever. And we have such a demand for our facilities, they're basically used, until, some of them used till like 11, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night, when the custodians go home during the year. So that's why we need the furniture that we buy, and that's why we need the quality, and that's why we need the fire code. Now, Michelle Romaine was, oh, there you are, was kind enough to, they're asking for coat closets? So I'm going to pass a couple of pictures of existing coat closets that they're looking to replace in their facilities. You can see they're metal, they're not in the best condition, but we want to get rid of those older units and replace them with good sturdy coat closets. There are hooks inside. People say, why don't you just put hooks out in the hallway? That's against fire code. You can't do that. Can't do that for a number of reasons. You're creating an excess combustible mass in your hallway. You're blocking a means of egress. You're also causing a safety issue with kids walking by with hooks coming off the walls. So there's a lot of reasons why you can't, why you can't do that. So that kind of is my brief, I think, answer on furniture. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Matt. And while you're at it, could you please answer the next question, which is, what percentage of the district's furniture is replaced on average in a year?
We usually do maybe one or two, one or two classrooms. I can't break it down into a percentage. But usually on average, one to two classrooms a year.
Per building?
Per building, yeah. Sometimes we change it up a little bit as far as getting kidney tables, everything like that, instead of your just, you know, your regular desks and chairs, depending upon the room and the way the room's going to be utilized. But it's usually one to two, one to two classrooms a year that we do replace. And now, you know, with the whole different philosophy as far as flexible seating, we want to take a look at that in the future and see how that can fit. So your 25 chairs, 25 desks in a classroom may look totally different in the future, depending upon what the principals desire to have in their buildings.
Thank you, Matt. Just anecdotally, last year, or actually this year, we had a Girl Scout who was earning a badge, turned two of our very, very, very old bookcases, which were to be discarded into a puppet theater for the kindergarten classes. So we really are quite frugal and creative.
Everything used to its fullest extent.
Yep, exactly. And when Matt speaks to two classrooms a year, that's, he's speaking just desks and chairs. So sometimes you'll see bookcases and tables and other such items that were prepared to discard old, old, pretty much unusable furniture that's quite, you know, 40 to 50 years old. So thank you. And the next question I'm also going to turn over to Matt, and it has to do with charter schools. And it says, can you give a grand total of money budgeted in the Merrimack School District operating budget that actually goes to serve charter schools, transportation supports, et cetera?
Yeah, the actual amount for the support charter schools including transportation is $96,275.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to go to specific questions that are asked by various members. And the first set of questions comes from Chair Barnes. And this has to do with the assembly account for kindergarten, which is ending in 18, 83, 10. And the question states, please share information on the kindergarten assembly and the curriculum it supports. And this year, this is the first year we've had an assembly account. So two schools have completed their assemblies and one has not. And the three elementary schools held or will hold interactive assemblies that are aligned to science and social studies curriculums. In this case, it was the New Hampshire Seacoast Science Center that came and did hands-on activities with the kindergarteners related to marine biology. The next question is, if there can be a brief overview of kindergarten curriculum, that would be ideal. An outline of the day and the week would be sufficient. And I'll read you just a brief overview, that all kindergarten students who are now full day, and with the exception of a few that might opt for half-day, receive literacy instruction through reading and writing workshop models using Fountas and Pennell levelingized reading text. Phonics is instructed through word work activities and further supported with Literacy Footprints Program. The teachers use the new Envision math program to instruct the math curriculum. Social studies and science content are more embedded and integrated through units of study. Assessments include the New Hampshire required DOE early literacy screening that determines at-risk students. We also do our own assessments, including Fountas and Pennell assessments that determine reading levels based on observable protocols that look at word attack skills and fluency and comprehension. Envisions, the math program, also has assessments that the students participate in at the end of their units of study. All of the kindergarten students participate in 45 minutes, four days, four days a week, 45 minutes of phys ed classes, computer classes, music and art, and as well as visiting the library weekly. And we have the second step lessons, those are the social-emotional learning lessons that are taught weekly to deliver information about self-regulation, conflict resolution, those types of skills. Daily, students participate in discovery activities whereby they explore, create, and interact with materials that reinforce critical thinking skills, problem-solving, and independent learning. And in addition, play-based activities allow for supervised social interactions with peers on a daily basis.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And the next question from Chair Barnes is a furniture question, which was also very similar to a question that was asked by Board Member Schneider and Board Member Gualumi. And this was a question that was specific to Thornton's Ferry, so I'm going to turn it over to Thornton's Ferry to answer this question.
Good evening. So the question was around furniture replacement, and in particular around the third purchase of classroom furniture that we have in our budget. And the third purchase for classroom furniture is part of our ongoing furniture replacement plan. Over the last 10 years, we have consistently invested in new furniture as part of our replacement plan, as we've talked about a little bit tonight. And then in reference to Board Member Schneider's furniture question on classroom usage, the two new classrooms will be placed in learning spaces that are current resource rooms. And we continue to reduce the amount of resource room pullouts for children as part of our overall goal to provide more inclusive supports and services in the classroom.
Andy, do you have a follow-up for that?
I know this is your questions, but, so, we talked earlier about the space within the elementary schools as we talk about adding teachers and, you know, for first grade. And it's probably similar across, because I know the two Ferry schools are almost the same as each other. So you talked about replacing a learning space that's there. Are we going to hit a point where we can't expand after a certain point? How much, if we add, if we have to add another room in another year or two years because of the population? Is there a place that we can add within the building and not impact the studies that are going on within the buildings?
Well, I'll just reference to the point that Mr. Chevanel made about the capacity of our buildings at this point. And so back in the day, actually a little bit before my time, we had 800 to 900 students in the building. So whether it's a space issue at Thornton's, I would have to defer to the SAU around that. Ideally, we were at a really good place at Thornton's in terms of the number of students, but our classroom sizes, as I've been saying to the SAU, we're getting larger and larger classrooms. And so it's the classroom space that can be, be sometimes difficult. But we still have some room with which to consolidate and to move and to grow.
Okay. Do any of the other schools disagree with that?
No, I mean, I hear stories of when we did have, in the 700s, the art teacher went on wheels and went to the classrooms. So the art room converted, half of the library converted into a classroom. So, you know, you hear of people just using bathtubs and, you know, for reading books and all of that. So we're creative, but I would say that if we had to get three, four more classes out of it and put, basically displace related service providers, special ed teacher classrooms, that's something that we could do in terms of our infrastructure.
Okay. Similar for Master Cola, I mean, it's a different kind of building than the other two are, so.
No, I would echo the same thing. I mean, all of our spaces are being used for a variety of different things. And so I think elementary school people are masters of redesigning and reevaluating nearly about what to do with space. So there is space to continue, to continue adding classrooms right now.
Right. And the reason I ask the question is, is we're not imminent that we need to add anything new. We've got space to expand without impacting this, what we do for the students, so that was the purpose of the question. Thanks.
And I would think too, if we got to the point where one school was getting a big influx, that we could look at those boundaries between the schools. We've got three schools to divide them up between, so.
Yes, please, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, the next set of questions come from Board Member Andy Schneider. And I'll be answering for all of the schools for this one as well. For his first question, I combined it to answer about all three schools as opposed to dividing it into single schools. And the question is, what is the impact of continuing with only four grade-one teachers at Master Cola Elementary School, five grade-one teachers at Reed's Ferry School, and six kindergarten teachers at Thornton's Ferry School? And I guess as well, there was a question about the Thornton's Ferry School first grade. And you go on to say, the ratio seems to be still within the state suggested range of 20 or less students in K through 2. And our collective response is that as instructional leaders for the lower elementary schools, we strive to provide students with an optimal learning experience that provides for a strong foundation specific to literacy, math, and social-emotional skills. We value lower teacher-student ratios that result in more personalized learning and the ability to provide discreet instruction to a wide range of learning abilities and styles. While we trust in the excellence in education that our kindergarten and first grade teachers provide, we also seek to have students develop strong relationships with their educators and peers that can be done through smaller class size. Again, we strive to exceed state standards for classroom size. This goal is reflective of past and current research that speaks to the benefits of lower class sizes at the primary level. And to answer your question more definitively, the additional teachers will move the ratio from basically at the high end, 23, and at the low end, 16, at the various schools in kindergarten and first grade.
So one question I have, and this is for administration. So you sent us what the population was this year and then the forecast for next year at the elementary schools, and the reason for the additional staff. You've given us updated information for the staff, for the population at those schools. Does it make the needle turn any different in individual schools? Is it similar across all of them? I mean, the reason I'm asking is because the ratios at the new proposed population level are right at the cusp of the state-recommended guidelines, right? And my thought was, is can we get by another year with, I know that, I think it was, was it Thornton's that had? Yeah, Thornton's has the bigger influx, so making another teacher there made sense because it brought it down. But for the other three schools, the question is, because it's right at that threshold, could we get by with waiting? And what I don't know is, based on these new higher numbers that you gave us, whether we're starting to push beyond state-recommended boundaries in those schools. Because as we look at the budget, one of the ways that we can defer spending increase is to strike that really hard balance between where you've got the ratios and what you spend within a particular year. Because I know you've come to us in the past, when Marge was here, to add a teacher because the population is flexed in the middle of the year, right? So I guess what I'm looking in. So I guess what I'm looking and redirecting my view over here is to whether this is a real must-have for the district to be able to achieve, or whether it's one of those things that we want to do a more preparatory for. That's sort of my question.
So, in answering that, I want to just reiterate something that you said that I think it's important for people to know, that, you know, we're very regulated. And as an, you know, as an industry, as a business, education is very regulated. And one of the things that we have to do is work within what are called minimum standards. And, and the minimum standards apply to lots of things. One of the things they apply to is student-teacher ratio. So as you said, we have requirements that we have to stay within. And then, the state has a separate category of recommendations. So you must kind of stay here, but it'd be really good if you could be here. So, we have to work within those as well. So, to answer your question, we asked for the four teachers based on what our projections looked like, and knowing, knowing that there is a trending upward. Because daily, our principals, or weekly, when we have our weekly leadership meetings, they come and they share information about how, you know, there is, you know, two, three registrations today in some, you know, grade or other. And so, what I would say to you is, is the trend clearly suggests that this is closer to a need than a want. Because if we've added a hundred and nine students, let's say, just at minimum, district-wide, since October, I look at my colleagues and I don't think there's a suggestion that there's a real trend that's going to just stop that cold. That's not the direction we're going. You asked a question, can we, could we not? The answer is yes, we could not. One thing that I would just point out, though, is something that the board has been very articulate about, particularly relative to capital projects, is the phrase kicking the can. What I would tell you is that, based on what our actual experience is, coupled with what the projected enrollments are, if we didn't increase teachers this year, I would come back to you next year with that same request, but probably more, because the numbers are increasing. I'm not, I'm not telling you now that we will need teachers next year, but, I mean, that we will need additional teachers next year. But what I am telling you is, these teachers we're asking for now, I would say, are pretty important. However, we know, as Michelle said and others have said, we know how to manage creatively, and we will. But that bumps up against, you know, I think we have to ask ourselves, I've asked myself, what do we want for our students? And we know, particularly in early childhood, which we're defining as K to two, that smaller student-teacher ratios provides personalized attention, provides the kind of supports that can build a good foundation, so that theoretically, they can have a good foundation, so that theoretically, they will require fewer supports later on. That's how that's supposed to work. Does it work that way all the time? Probably not. But it stands to reason that when you're a kindergartner, and for the first couple of weeks, you don't know how to tie your shoes, or zip your coat, or whatever, that the, that the time it takes for a teacher to support twenty-three kids takes time away from, from, from other academic pursuits that we're trying to get our students to be involved in. So, that's what I would say to you. So I don't want to give the impression that we can't work through this. We do, our teachers do, all the time. And if for very valid budget reasons, the board would think that we couldn't do it, we would certainly manage. I'm just wanting to be very transparent and tell you, it will become an issue sooner than later, and that's what I'd say.
Cinda?
So with that, is it an issue now? So is it, is it...
I wouldn't have put it in the, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, it's okay. I'm just trying to understand if it's based on the projections for those grade levels, or if you're, we're actually feeling pain now, and it's an issue now, and these will actually make up for that. So, I'd like to spend a little more time kind of digging into why we need those positions.
Yep. So, I would encourage my, my colleagues to answer that, too. I'll just tell you, yes, what I, what I, yes, this is not a want, this is a need. But I also am trying to say to you that I understand that you've got a big task ahead of you to make decisions. And I think it would be unfair of me to say, "You can't possibly question this." So I'm not going to do that to you. But I'm also saying, I wouldn't have requested for teachers if I didn't think it was a need. But I would encourage my colleagues to just share a little bit about what their experience daily is as leaders of their buildings.
So, speaking on behalf of Thornton's, I have been actually very articulate, I would say articulate, maybe others would disagree with my, but about some of the struggles we've had at Thornton's Ferry as a result of the increased enrollment. And it's in particular impacted us at the K to two levels with high classroom, and we're currently at in kindergarten, and we're growing every day. At nineteen, some classrooms, twenty kids in the classroom. Our first grade, we're looking at twenty-three, twenty-four. Third and fourth grade, we're upwards now to twenty-seven kids in our third and fourth grade classrooms. And some of this is related to the development that you see. We also have seen a shift in students that are in the extended stays or living in hotels. And we welcome and we want all kids there, it's just we're trying to keep pace. Our classroom sizes, if you, I would welcome people to come and visit. You'll see, it's a tight squeeze. We're having to share some of our curriculum materials. And again, we are so thankful because we get the support, we have so much of resources in Merrimack, but we're really starting to see the impact of that. The other piece that we're really looking to take in account, and we're really thinking about the redesign of what we do. Kids are coming in with significant social emotional needs that really require some more personalized attention and from the adults. But we're having to really look at recess, lunch, those unstructured times, and think about a redesign based on the numbers of kids that in the past, were able to go out at recess, that now, we're really looking to redesign because of some safety concerns with the numbers of kids that are out at recess, or like I said, at lunch. So we're really thinking about redesign. We are creative. We work really closely together to make sure that all three of the schools, that we're trying anything that we can. But I, I just would really welcome, although we have the space from a building perspective, our classrooms are very tight. And also, the transient nature of some of the workforce development, it's very hard to be planned and consistent and purposeful in that, because every day, two to three more kids are moving into Thornton's Ferry. And like I said, we welcome, we want that, right? We want, right now, the schools of Merrimack have an excellent reputation. It's just making it harder and harder to provide the supports that we need to make sure that each kid is successful.
I'd like to come visit, so I'll reach out, so, thanks.
Naomi, I think you had your hand up?
So I agree that minimum standards are extraordinarily useful, but not necessarily the guidepost that we want as our ideal. I think the information is somewhere in here, but I'm not thinking about it right now, or it's been shared in some form. I think it would be helpful both for us and for the public to have a sense of what our own internal goals are, as far as the different grades and levels, and where we're placing our ideal number of students versus the state's ideal and the state's minimum and those. Because otherwise, simply saying, "We need fewer," is probably hard for people to contextualize what we're shooting for.
That's one, I have one thing that, you know, Julie, you're putting in a very positive verse. But you say, "You welcome, you want the kids." But I think what's also important to just articulate is that we're also legally required to accept them. We don't have the position to say no. We're a public school. I think that's probably very important, you know? Private schools, charter schools, they have lotteries, they can limit the number of enrollments. We don't have that luxury at all. And I think that's very important to share. So, I would just want to, you know, just add that, that fact to it. And, did you have your hand up, Mark? Okay, good. It was, okay, so, Andy, and then I'm going to the left.
It does also beg the question, and I'm not saying we do it now, but we have to, I think, as a board, talk about, are things aligned in terms of the way the population is in town? I mean, we're, obviously Thornton's Ferry is closer to the south, and where a lot of the, you use the word transient, I think extended stay kind of stuff is there. That tends to be where the, the big burst of that is. I think we need to look at the impacts that the other housing expansions are doing, the Gilbert Crossing at the north end of town, the, the stuff near Cinemagic, you know, those apartments there, and what makes sense. Because if we have more expanding room in the other schools, and Thornton's Ferry's got kids hanging out the windows, we as a board need to do the right thing. And not just automatically try to hire more teachers, but rather, see if we can spread it and make it more efficient. So, it's not something I want to decide today, but I'm seeing sort of the indicators that we're going to need to pay attention to this over time.
So I would just, I would say that I agree, and I welcome that conversation. We are, you know, we, we meet all the time as a team, and we monitor those things. You know, one of the things that we try very hard to do is to keep students in their home schools. That's a, that's a very big, in their neighborhood schools. That's something that parents want very, very much. One of the things that, you know, I can't speak to other schools, I wouldn't dream of doing it. I can just speak of Merrimack, and, you know, we try very hard to, and not always successfully, but we try very hard to provide the experience that people, people want for their children. And, you know, we, we, living in this town, provides certain, certain abilities that we don't have in, in other places. You have a neighborhood school. It's, it's part of the culture of, of a family's life, growing up. I'm a Thornton's kid. So, of course, that isn't the only factor, but it's worth saying that that's something that we really try to do in Merrimack, while at the same time, we're trying to work within all of the regulations that we have. Because we can't just say, for the sake of reduction and force, to have thirty students in kindergarten. We couldn't do that. So, but I get your point. I would just, I want to reassure the board that we'll really monitor that kind of thing a lot. And had that been an issue that we wanted to raise with you now, we would. Julie's describing a situation at Thornton's that's, you know, evolving.
Right. That's what I said, it's, it's not solid now, it's an indicator we have to look at. You're right, I understand the, the history of the neighborhood schools and things like that, I understand it. But we also have to be realistic about where the, the influx of new students is coming from, and be able to make sure we act appropriately. So it's a challenge we as a board are going to have.
Yeah.
I think I had John and Matt on the left side as well, so.
You go.
Black, paper, scissors over there.
Okay, let me, yeah, let me just go first. When I'm, when I'm looking at the numbers, and I heard what Julie said over there, we're, we're in agreement with, with what the current, today's enrollment are. And the grade levels that most concern me, seeing that the enrollment size is twenty-five to one with a goal of twenty, I'm seeing in grades three and four, almost twenty-seven to one. So we had put those teachers in a different area, in different schools. And right now, based upon the information I'm looking at, I'm thinking, maybe they shift to Thornton's Ferry. But that's something we have to, to look at and see how this plays out on a daily basis, or maybe we go with, yes, we do need four, but they could go here, here, or here, depending upon what we see next year. But I think in its entirety, what we're seeing now is what we're going to be seeing next year, and the need is still going to be there. I even had a conversation, and I don't like to, to broach this subject too much, is because of the state's standards being twenty-five to one, that's a hard number. In order for us to get below the twenty-five to one, we have to add a staff member. And I had a conversation with Kathy Peel about that. Would that be a state requirement that would allow us to put these additional positions in the default budget? So, that's something that I have information on, and we'll have further discussions, her and I, with DRA. And it's up to the board whether or not you want to entertain that. You don't have to, but it's something you could look at.
So I'm confused. I mean, there's never been a situation where we've had kind of optional for default, so I don't, so I'm just, that I remember.
Well, it's, you know, there's a lot of new laws out there. And some of them is, you know, like, any contracts, let's say administrators' contracts. Used to be, if you got a two-year contract, your contract would go into the default budget because you, the board, offered us, the administration, a contract that was a multi-year agreement. Now, I can't put that second year in because it wasn't voted on by the legislative body. So unless it's a contract like MTA or Mesa, none of the increases for the people you see here are in the default budget. So a lot of rules have changed. But this one here, going and looking at this in regards to the default budget, is really untested waters, you know? So it's something...
What I would just say is, you're right, your instinct is right, in that the default budget is something that's very, very highly regulated.
Yeah.
So, what Matt's describing is, in this very unique situation, could there be some conversation to be had? And if that is, it would only be able to be done with a lawyer's approval. So I would say right now...
I would say we would wait for legal counsel to come back with their recommendations.
Absolutely, but I wouldn't bank on, on that completely.
No.
Right, no. It's just, it's just a thought about what it takes to try to do due diligence.
And to start, you know, with the new laws that have been in place and everything like that, and the scrutiny over the default budget, I would rather err on the side of being really conservative with it, and not taking a chance, because then it could be challenged, and we don't want to get there, because we've already, we've already always played everything to the letter of the law. And what happens if the ratios aren't twenty-five, twenty-six to one, or whatever? Let's say we come in and we're actually twenty-four. Now we put something in the default budget, and when it was actualized next year, we didn't have the enrollments to support putting it in the default budget. So that's my big worry with it.
Okay, well, we'll await Kathy's legal advice and then take it from there.
And John, yes?
I'm good. Okay. Oh, thank you. Just an opportunity to bring it back to about kids, and where we are with, with, you know, our students, and what's good for them, and our family, and our community. And I think that, I've come before this board many times and been that person that's had to ask for that additional staff member. I've been on the other side of that table, sitting here multiple times. We watched a preschool grow from forty students to a hundred fifty-five, you're looking at on a piece of paper today, over the last eight years. And we did it for a reason. We did it because we, we value really early education, we value relationships with kids, we value the opportunity to bring students in as early as we can, especially those that may have some further learning needs, and have an opportunity to work with them longer. So I think from past feedback we've got, coming in front of the board later in time, when our numbers have increased and done things, it's always like, "Well, I wish we knew earlier during the budget process." And that's been some of the feedback we've gotten. And I think that for that case, I think that's why Mark, myself, and Matt really felt that it's appropriate to put it in now, and, and look at it as, as a definite need for our future of our children.
Okay. So thank you. And I do agree that Thornton's has the largest need at this point. However, we, you know that at the north end, we have two large developments that have taken place, and weekly, we have students registering. Last Thursday, we invited, I welcomed three new students in on Thursday, so it's, it's an ongoing occurrence, a regular occurrence. So it's, a lot of this is just knowing what the future looks like. And as John said, doing the best we can for the families and the students. So we appreciate the question, and we're happy to... So we appreciate the question and we're happy to, to answer any questions further as it relates to enrollments.
This is the wild card that we're all going to be working with because the town is growing in a way it never has before. I mean, I've, I've lived through all the growth of single-family homes, but the, the different type of housing that is being put everywhere is just makes your head want to blow up as you think about it. So we have to be pragmatic about what we do, understanding what we can do to expand, use what we can. The challenge that we have around staffing, especially at the lower levels is coming up. It's going to raise questions about staffing at the higher levels because can we afford to grow everywhere? I mean, the presentation earlier, talking about student-teacher ratios in Merrimack, you can see at the low levels, not as though we've got a two-to-one ratio or anything silly like that. It's going to force the conversation at other levels that we're going to have to have as a board, so. But I appreciate your candid transparency and sharing the good and the bad that you're seeing, so.
Well, thank you. And that will lead me to your next question. Chair, not chair, Board Member Schneider also asked a question of, there's a proposal in the budget for adding one kindergarten instructional assistant at each of the schools, which is also referred to as a KIA. So the question is, can you explain the benefits to be achieved by adding an additional kindergarten aid to each of the elementary schools and how that aid will be used across multiple rooms? So the kindergarten instructional assistants, known as KIA's, they exist in their own work classification and are different than paraeducators. And per their job description, the KIA's assist with the instructional outcomes. They often conduct progress monitoring assessments, teach small group intervention lessons and help to prepare for and deliver various learning activities. The ratio of KIA's to kindergarten classes, classes has lessened over the year due to the expansion of the number of kindergarten classes. With additional personnel in kindergarten, the distribution of instructional supports becomes more equitable classroom to classroom and allows for teachers to have help during critical instructional blocks, such as during literacy and math instruction. And just so, for example, the, the two KIA's that are at Master Cola Elementary School, there's, there's only two kindergarten instructional assistants, but there's five classes. So during a literacy instructional block or a math instructional block, they can only be in two rooms. So there's classrooms that are not receiving the same levels of support. So even with an additional one kindergarten instructional assistant, it still doesn't really address the overall need to have that very specific classification more readily available to the teachers. And so I'm looking to you again to see if I've answered the question appropriately or
No, it's, it's, I think there's not a lot known about the KIA's in terms of what they do. How many are there? I mean, you've described sort of how many there are and that they float around and are there when they're needed. We could use more, but this will improve the situation.
Yeah, and I think the important distinction is that they are their own classification. KIA's were, that the whole kindergarten instructional assistant came with the onset of kindergarten in two thousand and five and where we, if we only had three classes, three KIA's would suffice. And now we're all at six and five classes for kindergarten and with a range of two to three kindergarten instructional assistants. So the, the, the purpose of them is not aligned with what is actually happening.
Okay. So I guess a question for administration is, given the, the, the total employees versus the number of teachers versus others, are KIA's categorized as teachers or sort of support staff?
They're support staff.
Is it support staff?
Yes.
So it wouldn't, so the KIA's doesn't, don't change the, the bogey on teachers that we've got? It's
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, they're in the supports, staff contract.
Thanks.
Okay, I think I can, I think that's it for you, Mr. Schneider, and I'm going to move on to board, pardon me? Okay, so I'm going to move on to Board Member Naomi Schoenfeld. And your first question is about the gifted and talented program. And it's under the account line items of eighty-three, twenty-two, dash eleven, dash twelve, dash thirteen. And the question states, clearly the resources used to serve students areas of gifted and talent, the gifted and talent reach beyond the nine hundred per school in this account. Can you talk a little bit about the ways the elementary schools meet the needs of these learners from other areas of the budget and how specifically this light item is spent? And the response to that is that the money that is in the gifted and talented line is used to purchase materials for students who, who are specifically eligible for the gifted and talented program. But in addition, materials providing enrichment to other students. And that happens through various presentations, assemblies for students, such as the New Hampshire Audubon Society comes in, there's a small fee for that, they present to all of the fourth graders, and the New Hampshire Historical Society comes in and presents for all of the fourth grade students. And then in addition, there's a first grade experience with the farm, farm animals. And in each curriculum area, there are materials and resources that are used by students in the gifted and talented program. Within each subject area, resources are used to meet a variety of students at different learning levels. So in our response to intervention model, our RTI model and our universal design for learning models, the UDL models, we seek to provide appropriate learning materials for a broad range of learners. We feel that this need is met with that nine hundred dollars per school for targeting the gifted and talented programs. Thank you. And I'm, I'm just going to take a peek to see if I had any more questions from you. No, I'm going to move on to Brandy Nunes. Board Member Brandy Nunes presented us with some questions. And the first one has to do with our reading text account numbers and those are ending in eighty-six, forty-one, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. And this is specific to the reading text account line. And I'm going to ask Michelle Romaine to address this question. She's a former language arts coordinator and it's the language arts coordinators who present us with these budgets and recommendations for reading resource materials. So if I could, I'll pass it to Michelle.
Thank you. So Brandy's question was, can you share what this line includes? So the reading text account is used to purchase materials for the instruction of reading. This includes programs and resources that are used to teach the core curriculum, books and materials that are used for small group reading instruction, as well as books for independent reading where students have the opportunity to practice the skills they're learning in high-interest books. In addition, within this line, there are resources such as reading response journals, phonics kits for second graders, and online subscriptions. Her question, her next question was, is this something that we could scale down significantly or go without for one year? This is not a line item that can be scaled down significantly as these items are required for the delivery of our curriculum. And specifically, she asked, what would the impact be? A large part of this line, in addition to what I mentioned, includes consumables. So things like our reading response journals, which we, back when I was in school, they were workbooks, but they're differently formatted. But those types of things are in that line. And so if the line was reduced, the impact would be limited resources in which to effectively and comprehensively deliver our, our reading instruction.
Thank you. So the next question that was asked by Board Member Nunes has to do with additional teachers in classroom setup at Thornton's Ferry. She's wondering if it's possible to hold off on the following items from the other schools. And so her, her question was, could you take the six thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars in furniture replacement and push it to next year? And Reed's Ferry School, five thousand four hundred sixty-six for furniture replacement and furniture plan? I'm sorry?
No, I'm not on. Do you want me to start again? Okay. You guys could have just let me go on till midnight. Okay, I'm so, I'm so sorry. Okay, so this question again is from Board Member Nunes and it has, says, due to needing additional teachers in classroom setups at Thornton's Ferry School, which is an expense of sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, I was wondering if it's possible to hold off on the following items from the other schools. And that would be at Master Cola Elementary School, six thousand five hundred and eighty-eight for furniture replacements pushed to next year. And Reed's Ferry School, five thousand four hundred and sixty-six for furniture repair and replacement pushed to next year. And our response to that is furniture replacement can always be pushed out as it has in the past. However, there are unintended consequences, such as an impact on our infrastructure furniture plan rollout and replacements in the other schools. The other point to point out, to make is that we seek to have an investment approach that keeps expenses consistent. We consider this to be good fiscal planning by trying to invest in an incremental way across all schools. And basically, I have to say that we're very good about sharing furniture. Should we, should we need it, should one school need additional desks or chairs and we happen to be able to be in a place where we could share it, we would do that. However, there is this notion, as Dr. McLaughlin mentioned, of kicking the can. And this is my fifteenth year here and I've seen a lot of furniture replacements be in the, it's for the first thing that's sensible, it's sensible to make that cut when you're looking at the fiscal need to, to do so. So it's, we really ask for very, very small portions of the budget furniture replacement. Can it be done? Absolutely. Is it the most, what we would consider the best for planning purposes in terms of keeping faith, good faith to our furniture plans? I would say not.
Can I?
Um, I'm sorry?
Just addition to that, too, is I want to, I want to just comment about furniture, too. As we move forward, we've embarked on something as a district under universal design for learning and UDL, in part as providing the, remove some of the barriers from the classroom. And if some of that barriers are stationary seat for a student and some of those barriers are the current traditional structure of the way we've set things up, well, we're trying to be creative in our learning. We're trying to do some things that are thinking a little different. And we often hear in the public about, well, schools haven't changed and schools haven't done better and schools haven't done this. Well, we're making an opportunity to do some of that change. Some of that change is going to come with some of creative thinking around some of our furniture design and replacement. And I think that's why it's important, to Kim's point, we can prolong this and it is one of the first things to go sometimes. But when you do that, you're also impacting instruction now also.
Andy?
Well, since the furniture door is still open, so I guess it begs the, it begs the question if, I know each school does a small amount of replacement, the way you described. The third classroom at Thornton's, is it a need to replace an entire classroom of furniture this year coming up? Is it, I, I guess, the way you explained it, I didn't realize that we were going to replace an entire classroom. So the question that I have, which I guess is to administration as well as you, is, is that something we have to do this year? I mean, there's the kick the can and then there's the, the other part here. So I guess that'd be my overall question here, so.
Do you want me to, or do you want, oh, go ahead, Julie. You're the principal, please, go ahead.
Um, there's always something we, you know, we always can be creative. Right now, the need is the two. It would be great to have the third as part of our overall replacement. The need is related to the two additional teachers. So in order to maintain our consistent investment, I would say we need, we could use the third, but if we need to cut that, then we would work with that.
Well, that's what I, I mean, obviously the two new teachers would need new setups, right? That don't exist. But I guess the question is, can we get by without doing the third this year? Given, I mean, it's, it's unusual to outfit three classroom, classrooms in one building at the same time.
Yeah, we did that last year as part of our plan. And again, as to what Kim shared, we're trying to be consistent in our investment, but we will always do, you know, whatever, as creative as we can. I didn't know, Mark, if you had any other.
You said exactly what I was going to say.
That's right. Thanks.
I just wanted to say overall, I mean, I've been working with the elementary schools for a long time in the budget process, three years on the budget committee, now many years here. And when I was on the budget committee, one of the things that we did as part of that committee is actually frequently do visits. We had subcommittees, so the budget committee would divide up and go into the schools, as you know. And I spent a lot of time doing those subcommittees with the elementary schools and the upper elementary. And what I can say is, when you see the furniture that has to be replaced, it literally has been welded many, many times. Your budget is very, very lean. It's very, it's simple to follow, simple to read. I mean, the, the carpet, I remember the most, you know, it was forty-year-old carpet in the library. It finally had to be replaced because it was becoming a tripping hazard. So I just want to say that we're asking a lot of questions, but I understand what you put forth and what you have over the years and how little you really work with every year.
Thank you. It's this lean. That's, that's my budget. Thank you very much. So I'm going to move on to questions from Board Member Cindy Guahumi. And the first question has to do with the community relations account, which is ending in eighty-six, eleven, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. And the question is as follows. Please explain the a thousand dollars, which is a thousand-dollar line item in each of our budgets. And all three of our schools use those funds to support various activities. And some of those include the annual Hawk Walk luncheon whereby the high schoolers come and are served pizza and visit their home schools upon a gradu, upon graduation. Food to recognize our parent volunteers at the end of each year. We do, all of us hold bus driver appreciation breakfasts for our, our bus drivers annually. Various parents events, maybe an entrance fee to the New Hampshire Blue Ribbon, which occurs annually, and fees associated with New Hampshire Eddies. So those are the general trends for that. Your next question was, please explain the additional music equipment. And this was for Master Cola Elementary School, light item eighty-seven, fifty, dash eleven.
Thank you. So the question was, please explain the additional music equipment. And this will be used to purchase musical instruments, particularly a set of chimes to be used within the music classroom and chorus programs. And this is the next step in a series of musical instruments to be purchased in order to maintain consistency with the other two buildings and what has already been purchased there.
Thank you. And the next question is for, is specific to Reed's Ferry School and it's under the account line item number eighty-seven, thirty-nine, dash twelve. Please explain the replacement of speakers for the music equipment. So the current speakers in the music room are those that are built into the laptop projector. So they're really not speakers. I mean, they're speakers that are attached. And it really doesn't suffice for the sound quality. Recently, our music teacher experimented with using another teacher's old like boombox for projection, which really did not provide the quality sound. So she's basically looking for a system that's, can be used in the classroom to amplify the music that, as she instructs the students. And that amount is six hundred dollars. I'm sorry. And the last question from you is related to Reed's Ferry School's social studies field trip that had a slight increase in, from last year. And that's under account number eighty-five, nineteen, dash twelve. And in meeting with the three, the, the three lower elementary principals met recently to look specifically at field trips and we realized that there were certain discrepancies in what we were, how we were calculating for our field trips. And one of the things we noticed was that Reed's Ferry School was providing less wait time, which means the time that the children are actually on the field trip, which is what you pay the, the bus drivers for, that wait time. So we sought to become more aligned with wait time as experienced at our sister schools. So for example, in the past, we only spent two hours at Kirsaj Indian Museum and we changed it to spend the three hours. Another way that this particular line item fluctuates quite a bit year to year, it depends on how many classes you have per grade level. So if I have five classes per grade level at second grade, I would need three buses. The next year, if I have four classes at second grade, I would only need two buses. So in looking at the past expended and proposed field trip budgets, there's always variation based on that as well. And the last question, I'm going to defer to, to Matt on, and this is asked again from Cindy, it's about the telephone line item ending in eighty-five, thirty-one, dash twelve. It says, please tell us more about the telephone line item. Is this for phone bills, equipment? What was the methodology for the calculation for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one?
If I could just clarify, I noticed that in a, I really wanted to question it across all of our schools, I guess. And it just, this is where it first came up, where I was wondering with technology changing, you know, are there additional options we have for, to provide telephones throughout the district? And are we really going with the district that is going to save us the most money? So
Oh, absolutely.
Whether it's not like on the
Yeah.
For right now, for this year, if it's something that we can look at going forward across the board or if it's not worth going forward, I just don't know. I'm just asking the question, so.
Yep. All our telephone systems were changed
All our telephone systems were changed to voice-over IP a number of years ago. We did a, a refresh recently on that. And all those charges are based upon a three-year average. It includes, includes the connectivity piece to the school that's associated with the phone service, 'cause it's all over the internet now. And it includes any additional equipment that we would need if we need to replace a phone. So it's an all-inclusive number. And going out a number of years, I think you'd probably see it trending, trending downward as far as saving us any long-distance fees or anything like that. But it's all voice-over IP handled by the server, all in Merrimack High School, and then it just kinda goes out from there, so. It's probably the most efficient we can get as opposed to the old Centrex systems that we used to have years ago.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you very much. We've provided you with an overview of our three budgets, as well as answered the specific questions, and we just wanted to ask first if there's any other questions to be had or if all the questions were answered adequately.
I think that we are good.
Well, that's wonderful.
Definitely, it's been long.
This is the longest we've ever talked to the elementary schools, I think.
I know.
They've got so much going on with the enrollments, that's definitely making a very tough job to, to, to prevent, to present the budget without a lot of, you know, digging. So, but we definitely wish you a great rest of your school year. We thank you for taking the time to put the effort in to answer all our questions as thoroughly as you have, and we do appreciate that. And if, you know, we, we look forward to hearing you at the end of the year, that's our highlight to the year, so, when you come back for your student presentations, so.
Wonderful, it's wonderful to see you. Thank you very much. Good luck with the rest of the evening.
We're on to item number six, which is a formal hearing on the Master Cola Upper Elementary School budget. I invite to the table Marsha and Bill. Principal Marsha McGill and Assistant Principal Bill Morris. So thank you and welcome.
Good evening, happy new year.
Happy new year.
I'm Marsha McGill, the principal of the upper elementary, and I have with me William Morris, our assistant principal. We're here this evening to provide for you information in reference to two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year. As in the past, this budget proposal meets with, you know, what we have set as our goals for the Merrimack School District and the upper elementary school. And we really focus on the areas of literacy, numeracy, technology, and social, or the school climate in the building. The budget also reflects the need for us to be physically responsible. Our budget is down, and we strive for minimal budgetary implementations or implications. We wanna thank you for providing, providing questions in advance, and I'll start to address those with you. But first, I'd like to address the fact that our budget is down, our bottom line. Again, like the three preschool through fourth grade schools due to the decrease in the envisioned math budget line, as well as the social emotional learning line. So I'd like to start with the general questions first. We'll probably be repeating some of the same information as the three preschool through fourth grade schools. But talked about field trips, we also would have the same expectations for field trips. Transportation costs have increased to eighty-five a mile, thirty-one dollars wait time. Chaperone fees would be included, that would be a part of what the district covers. Students would pay for their own admission into that field trip or that activity. If a school, a student cannot afford to pay for that, we have provisions for that through, we do ice cream sales, and that money goes right back to students, and that would always provide for students. Our PFA would be willing to support us as well. I'm sure teachers would, we'd have multiple ways in which to pay for that. Our teachers are very aware of their students, what their needs are, and so they would let us know if they felt that a student would need to have support to attend to a field trip. So everyone has an opportunity. From time to time, we may have a student who chooses not to go, maybe they get sick on a bus, they don't want to. Students are always encouraged to be at school, we put them in another grade-level classroom, and they'd still have a day of learning at school. But typically, about a hundred percent of our students go on our field trips. If a student doesn't have a lunch, and our teachers would be aware of that, they know their students well, they'd go right to the lunchroom and a lunch would be provided for them, so that would never be an issue for a student. Next question was in reference to what does furniture look, you know, like bookcases and cabinets and closets? Why do they cost more than the basic consumer furniture? Again, like explained earlier, there are certain fire guidelines that we have to meet, safety inspection guidelines that have to be met, as well as the use, just the hundreds of children who use our equipment or our furniture every day. So we have to make sure that that equipment would meet those standards. So we have that same sturdiness expectation that the other elementary schools would have. What's the average lifespan of the furniture under a typical heavy utilization we would find in a school? Well, I arrived in nineteen eighty-one and we're still using furniture that was there well before that time. So we have furniture, our building, some parts of our building were built in, what, the early fifties? Yes, it is older than I am. And other sections in the seventies, and the last section of our building in the mid-nineties, and, and we have furniture that was there from pretty much the beginning, especially our cafeteria tables. So I think the lifespan of furniture under heavy use, again, we have a wonderful maintenance department, they do a wonderful job maintaining our furniture and our equipment in the building, and they've really, you know, maintained it for us. You talked about what percentage of the district furniture is replaced on the average every year? Again, I looked towards Matt for that. It would be a very small percentage as to what's replaced every year.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, very small.
Very small. Then you had answered the question about charter schools already, so I'll get to more specific questions now. I'd like to go to Assistant Chair Guajumi's questions. First one was about furniture, and I'll give you a little more information in reference to furniture. You ask about the replacement initiatives at the school, including the need and how it's been approached in phases. We do purchase our furniture in phases. For example, we're talking about cafeteria tables. We're in the fifth year, or this coming year will be the fifth year of a twelve-year plan to replace them. We're only replacing two tables at a time, and it, it takes several years. The question will come later about could some of those things be put off? And always, it would just move that year out, and we'd put, the year after that would be the fifth year of a twelve-year plan. Doesn't mean that we don't need the furniture, but we definitely, you know, buy it in phases. Our science chairs, we're in the year four, next year would be year four of a six-year replacement plan, so we've been going through this very systematically. And our computer tables, this is the first time we're asking to replace them in two labs, and it would be our year one of three. So we always plan out for that. Matt, you'd like to speak about instructional equipment repairs?
Yeah, the eighty-four thirty-one, eighty-four thirty accounts instructional equipment repairs and non-instructional equipment repairs. That's the contract we have with Conway Office, initiated basically by Nancy Rose and bringing all our copiers under one umbrella. It also allows us all servicing supplies and support to those copiers and equipment. There is, I forget, I, we used to do like fourteen million copies a year as a district. Now we're doing a lot of, of color too, that's in those copy machines. The cost per copy for, for color is exceedingly much less than it is off any sort of inkjet printer or anything like that, especially when you're talking a big, heavy-duty copier. So it's to maintain what we have and service and supply, and to take care of any issues district-wide. It also provides us with a service called Paper Cut. So each staff member has a code that they enter, so we can track how many copies each staff member is making. Are they black and white? Are they color? Are they stapled, everything like that? That's just to, for tracking purposes and to know who's doing what. And if somebody's doing something abnormally high, then perhaps Marsha would, or Bill, would make a visit and just say, hey, what's going on? So it's just a check and balance, just to make sure everything is as it should be. So it's a very good service for both those accounts.
Good, thank you. The next question was in reference to world language, asking that they recall from a couple of years ago that they were possibly going, that we were possibly going to change the way we approach our half-year Spanish, half-year French for two years. Our world language curriculum is right now in a revision process, so until that revision is complete, we would not make an attempt to make any changes to what we do currently, but would look at that once they have recommendations for what that revision would be. Then we'd look at that. The next question we have, oh, excuse me.
Do we know when that's expected, that process is expected to be completed, the language review?
They're currently, they're currently in the second year. I know that I had a conversation with Angela Muzelakwa, our department head, and last two weeks ago, they went off and did some learning together, and they're in process now of starting to really look at kind of the, the longer view, 'cause really, this is the first time we'll include the, the, the upper elementary in this, in this curriculum. So there, there, I'd say, if I gave a scale midway through a process, I would say where they are, but I could certainly talk them about at some point coming back to the board and giving.
More to come.
Yeah.
Thanks.
The next question is in reference to curriculum or community relations, excuse me, and says, please explain, our community relations is used for a wide variety of, of activities in our building. For example, our Veterans Day assembly that we have every fall, our business partners' breakfast, our volunteer dessert and coffee at the end of the year, our admission fees for the Gold Circle and Blue Ribbon awards through Partners in Education, and also for our Career Day continental breakfast and lunch. And if you remember, Career Day replaced the Enterprise City once Enterprise City was no longer functioning. So those are the types of activities, I know, that are a part of the community relations account. The next question was in reference to office supplies and why do you think the costs are rising? There's an increase in paper, an increase in ink. We have many more requests for records and making copies. Also, our report card goes on a larger paper, so that would be a little bit more of an expense. So those are all things that contribute to our office supplies.
Cindy?
Is it possible that parents might be able to opt out of paper in the future and things like that, to cut down on the mailing and to cut down? 'Cause like I can see my kids' grades in Power School, is there like a regulatory, are we required to send the paper copy by mail, or are there maybe some options? We didn't have to answer now, but I would just say if we can maybe think about that.
It'd be, it'd be a conversation we'd need to have with each school and how their report cards generated, what it looks like, and what they wanna do and how they wanna roll it out. I know at the high school, it's been one of those things where, you know, we've wanted to do that for some time.
It's expensive to mail things? I mean, when you multiply it times a lot of.
It can get expensive, and seeing it's all on Power School, you know, and everybody say, you know, you don't know who doesn't have an account. So therein lies, lies the issue. So it may be something that we, you know, send out an email or do something, you know, if, if you would prefer to get your report card via, you know, Power School, you know, you can, you can do that. But they're there and they can, they can print them out, just like we print them out too.
It's also important to just point out that we have a very active report, standards-based report card committee that's a K to six.
So another thing coming up too.
Yep, and that, and that is going to include, and you know, the board will hear about that in the second sem-, well, this semester. But anyway, and that will include conversations about the very thing you're talking about.
Yeah, we just say, you know, it's, obviously, it's probably late for this season, but if you could start, maybe bring that with your leadership team and see what ideas might come out of that to reduce those fees.
Mm-hmm, yep, yes. If I, if I could just add one thing, the, the reference to the ten percent, and this applies across the board to the office supplies, so we've done something a little different this year. The board might remember that in previous years for supplies, we've had a per pupil, so there's been a per pupil, you know, an amount and a times the per pupil. So I've been here for ten years, and in that time, I'm not aware of many of those, that those costs for office supplies changing much, maybe by a couple of cents or something, but generally, they've been that way for a long time. And so what often happens is that teachers have to supplement, and also that sometimes we've had to overexpend those lines. So what we did this year is we took an average of three-year actuals and, and then added ten percent, because costs are different now than they were when those first per pupil costs were established. And we think that that reflects a more accurate pricing for what actually supplies cost our district. So you'll notice that throughout the budgets, whenever there's a reference to office supplies, that's what we've done, and that's the reason.
I did notice that, so thanks.
That's the reason, yep.
Thank you. The next question is again in a question about furniture replacement. These are questions that were also asked by board member Schneider Schoenfeld and Nunez. Again, we have many, many pieces of our furniture, original pieces, especially in our cafeteria, as well as the stools in our science rooms. Many of them are taller or shorter, and tops are broken and, you know, screws are coming out, and so we've just needed to replace, especially the stools in the science rooms, that's the reason for that. We have done replacements in the past, but they've mainly been for classrooms, desks in the fifth grade. We've replaced desks and chairs there, but we've never replaced the stools or chairs we want now for our science rooms. We've also, in the past, replaced kidney tables that were needed. But these past, you know, four or five years or the first years, we've asked for the cafeteria tables. The computer tables are new, the ones we currently have are not computer tables, they're just a basic table, very much like this one, and because of the weight of the computers, many of them are Boeing, and so that's why we're starting that replacement plan to, to replace them. So that's a lot about our, our furniture. If there are more specifics, I can share a little bit more about that. Questions from board member Schneider. Again, talked about furniture. Can you share the status of each of the replacement requests specifically? I'm looking to see how many of these items are ready to be out of service and must be replaced, and whether any of these replacement involve keeping some of the older units to handle growth and expansion. Some of them are at the point of out of service, some of our cafeteria tables would be those we've, you know, pushed to the side. We've not gotten rid of anything that's usable, we still have them, we still use them. We may use a certain number of tables every day for lunch, for the six different lunches we have, but when there's a large event, we may pull all the tables out to use them to handle the numbers. So we always keep equipment and utilize it. And if we needed to continue to use it, I guess I'd ask Mr. Tuso, how much more welding can he do? So that's a little bit about, you know, furniture replacement. Board member Schoenfeld had asked about the reading text, very similar to the answers from the preschool through fourth grade, but I'll share with you a little bit about the work that we're doing. We, we work at buying materials that help to support students and teachers when it comes to guided reading. Not only the core instruction, but instruction that needs to be for enrichment purposes or for intervention purposes, so we look for the, the materials that we need for that. We work for mentor texts or those, you know, interactive read-alot texts that we need, and we work with students, so it would be purchasing them, as well as encouraging students to write about their reading, and so we'd have response journals would all be a part of that, that reading, everything that's needed for core literacy instruction. And to support, like I said, either the interventions or extensions that children need to be successful. need to be successful. Um, also, uh, Board Member Schoenfeld had asked about, um, the gradual increase in the line. Is it coincidental, or does it reflect a furniture aging-out pattern that should be noted or addressed in coming years? And we are, it is an aging-out, especially of the computer tables, the science stools, even the computer tables. They are coming to a point where, you know, we're concerned, and that's why if we replace a couple every year, then it's a less of a expense. So we're working on that. We then had a couple of questions from Board Member Nunez. She had asked about, can we push the two round cafeteria tables for the amount of $2,982 and half of the 28 science room chairs, which will be $2,380, for discussion next year? And I'd say the same as the, you know, the previous elementary schools had said, you can always push out, you know, a furniture purchase. That just means that would extend that, but it doesn't mean that that furniture doesn't need replaced, because it does need replaced. So we're just going through the process, but if that's something that the board would decide, then we'd respect that and use currently what we have. Then, uh, Board Member Nunez also asked in reference to the reading text, which would be the same response that I had just given. Those were the questions that were presented. If there's anything else you'd like to ask us about, we'll try to answer for you.
Is there any, Andy? Okay, I think we're good. Um, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, losing me a little bit, sorry. I'm, I'm really plugging through here, but the good news is we're on the, the, the speed track for the rest of our meeting.
Thank you.
So thanks again, have a great rest of your year. Um, we're on time number seven, which is the approval of the December 16th, 2019 minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept made by Andy, seconded by Naomi. There are any adjustments to the minutes from December 16th. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, none, the motion carries forward 00. Onto item number eight, which is consent with John.
Thank you. This evening, I have, uh, three teacher nominations. We have Kathleen Carey, our teacher at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School, Steve Chason, health teacher, Ma, um, Merrimack Middle School, excuse me, and Terry Tromp, Trompac, second grade teacher at Master Cola Elementary School.
I'll entertain a motion. Uh, Andy?
I move we accept the consent agenda as read.
Uh, seconded by Cindy, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, none, the motion carries forward 00. Uh, number nine, new businesses, are there any new business to come before the board? To the left, to the right, seeing none. Uh, committee reports, are there any committee reports from the board? With the holidays, it would've been a big shocker if there were, but, uh, we'll go with none. Um, we don't have posted, but we always have, uh, communications. Uh, the boards have received two. We've received a letter from an unknown source, we're not even sure it's Merrimack. It was actually anonymous, just questioning our, um, our use of the tomahawk for our mascot, but wanted to, uh, share that, that just came to our table tonight. And then we got a letter from, uh, parents looking for assistance with, um, their student, uh, for academic and high school environment questions. So that was, um, shared with administration. Any other communications? Andy and Cindy?
Um, I had one communication from a parent regarding the parking at the high school. Um, she had some suggestions. I forwarded them on to administration, as well as Sharon Putney, um, and asked that they be distributed to the parking committee, um, that's underway. Um, I've had additional correspondence with her. She said she's more than willing, um, to, uh, for phone calls or to be contacted to provide more input, uh, regarding what her thoughts were. Um, the second one is I had correspondence from a citizen that had questions as to why, um, what I thought the difference would be, is between Bedford and Merrimack as it relates to their respective budgets, and what, um, my thoughts are around why their budget, um, is lower, as well as the cost per student. So I had some of the thoughts that I know based on the budget. I reviewed the budget. Um, I went to Bedford and spent a couple hours, reviewed it, um, got back to that constituent, at least my thoughts, uh, based on, um, what I could tell were some key differences or key contributors.
And I had a resident reach out with several questions and wanted to learn more about the budget process. That person may or may not have spoken here this evening.
I said we didn't call him out.
May or may not, I have no idea.
May or may not, okay.
Um, but that was it.
Okay, um, no other correspondence? Any comments from the board? Andy and Cindy?
So I have a question about the, the upcoming meetings.
Yes.
Um, so you, there's an updated version in our packet about budget hearings, where we've got, the next one is tomorrow night, um, in the memorial room, which is next to the town clerk's office, which we're talking about middle school, high school, student services, and the district-wide. Next week, there are, on paper, three meetings in a row, on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, followed by our Tuesday, the 21st, which is our next normal board meeting. I'm trying to understand, now I know that I'm gonna put Cindy on the spot here, I know you have an issue with Wednesday meetings, so my question is, based on this agenda, can we do a Tuesday and an if necessary Thursday meeting next week, and then plan to close the, the budget on the 21st at our regular school board meeting? The, my only, the reason for asking this is that we, as board members, may have questions of administration, and you need the time to be able to talk with departments about certain things. I know that the budget committee is, on paper, their first meeting is Thursday, the 23rd, for their first budget review. So technically, they don't need the budget final until they start to deliberate on their side. So my, my request and conversation with the, the board here is, is whether we can do tonight and tomorrow, and then be able to share with, after we've heard all the budgets, share any comments or requests we have, then meet on Tuesday, plan on that, and then a Thursday is necessary, and then plan on finalizing the budget on the 21st. That'd be my proposal.
And I would actually propose something a, a little different, because I think that we've had very thorough discussions so far, and I don't know that we're gonna be looking for additional meetings with departments if necessary. It's only come up when we, and on rare occasion, I remember, I think it was four or five years ago at the high school, where we just sent them back, because they didn't have a lot of detail on their budget, and we said, well, we want it, so they had to go back and get it. Um, but for historical purposes, uh, the last four or five years, we've, by having our budget questions prepared and having them, the, able, giving them the ability to do the research, we haven't asked them when to come back, and so far, I don't see us wanting them to come back necessarily. Uh, with that, could we move the work session up to Tuesday, the 14th, alongside the warrant article discussion, because I think it's going to be, uh, the more, we, I'm, I think we could probably accomplish both in manageable time and still be up before we are tonight. Yeah, um, Cindy?
I am on business travel the entire week of the 22nd, so the 22nd, Tuesday through Friday, I won't be available.
So that said, if we could actually put the, uh, work session on the 14th, make, um, and then if we had the 16th, make it the night, you know, because I know the 15th is a challenge, the 16th, the night for, um, finalizing the budget? Would that work, based on timelines and, and collaboration?
I think what, I, I, I think what I was hearing from, um, from Andy was that if there would be, so do you mean that if there would be any recommended, um, changes, that then those would be made known on the 16th, so that then we would have, from the 16th to the 21st, uh, come back to you with a final?
You will not be at that meeting, though, correct, Cindy? Okay.
But that shouldn't stop what's best for the process.
I just wanted to clarify, we'll do whatever is the will of the board.
My, my only re, my only request is, is that after tomorrow night's meeting, we as individual board members may have requests of administration to come back with information. Some may be numerical, numerical, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
It's late.
So far, so good.
Yeah, um, but other may be questions around things that are more difficult, such as staffing, for example. Um, so I want to make sure there's adequate time for you to get the information and for us to debate. We may need to have another round back and forth, depending. I think this budget's a little bit different to look at this time. I'm looking at it with a different lens, maybe, than I have in the past. Um, so I want to make, I just want to make sure we have adequate time, that's all. That's my only request.
So, but would the 14th and the 16th still give you adequate time and not have the 15th? And we'd have to have a snow date, probably?
Right. I mean, I, I, I think having two meetings next week makes sense.
Okay.
My biggest question was, you've got three, I think you only need two. And if we could do Tuesday and Thursday as planning, that'd be great.
Okay.
But we do have the relief valve of the 21st if we need it. If we get done on the, on Thursday, then hey, great, but if we're not, um, I want to make sure that we still have that, because again, the budget committee doesn't start until that Thursday, so.
The 23rd?
Third, 23rd, based on their current schedule that they set.
Okay. So what we'll do is we'll finalize everything, uh, so we'll take the work session review of budget, move it up to Tuesday, January 14th, which is the same night for additional meetings with departments if necessary, and warrant article discussion, and then have the, uh, work se, the work session, um, aim, adjustments to be made on the, the 16th.
So what that means is to people listening about our discussion, is we're making sausage at the table. We're gonna meet tomorrow here, over there, and then next Tuesday, we're gonna meet here, and next Thursday, we'll meet in the high school. We gotta post this, right?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Um, and we may finalize the budget on that day, but if we need an extra day, it'll be back at the normal school board meeting, which, thanks to Martin Luther King Day, is Tuesday, the 21st, so.
Which therefore means it would be at the high school again.
At the high school. So we'll publish this with the what-if scenario, so people can see it, and that'll be on the webpage, but.
We'll do it, yep.
Could I make a suggestion? Um, could we also post that, could one of us just, could we authorize just Andy to go to some of the bigger social media sites and put the budget out there?
Yeah.
So we'll put it, so we'll put it, um, we'll put it tomorrow.
On the school district page, and then on.
Yeah, just make sure that you share it.
On our district Facebook page as well.
And then what I can do is just refer to that in the, some of the other places.
Yep, we'll do that tomorrow.
Yeah, cool. That works.
Okay. What'd you people do out there? I'm hearing with sirens. Okay, um, Cindy, you have comments as well?
I, I just wanted to thank everyone who came tonight. I know there are a lot of you that, um, have been here more than once. You've taken time out of your busy lives, and once again, I want to thank you for, um, being interested in the process, for coming to find out more, and to let you know that, um, I myself am available if you have any other questions, as well as the rest of the board. So thank you.
And we are on to the next item, which is public comments on agenda items. Anyone that would like to speak from the public, please state your name and address for the record.
Chuck Mower, Ford Depot Street. I rise in support of our professional elementary staff with their, um, very graceful entreaty, uh, to support their furniture replacement, uh, program in its, uh, modest configuration. I see no reason why we wouldn't easily, uh, a, adopt that position, and I would, I would professionally beg you to do so. Uh, and relative to my second concern is, um, I have been in your shoes, I know what you struggle with, uh, and yet there are some things that are, um, a little more clear than others, so stop struggling with them. We know what enrollments are doing, we know what our professional staff has recommended, we know that even with their recommendation, it has fallen a little bit short. So let's come to the conclusion that we all should now, before the budget process ends, and revise our elementary, uh, staff figures from four to five. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mower.
Good evening, Tracy Bowle, Five Independence Drive. First, I want to address, uh, the issue Mr. Schneider raised about public participation with the budget hearing process. And as someone who sat through school board meetings for the better part of seven years, as many of you up there will recognize, 2007 to early 2014, I did, there are a couple of instances where I was more than one of two. Andy, come on, um, 2007 elections.
I was trying to make a point, but anyway.
Yeah, I understand, and, and 2010 election cycle, for sure, were hundreds of people, to be fairly stated. It is, it, it is few and far between, and it usually involves some sort of issue that stirred the pot, whether it's taxes, or particular rifts, or something like that. But, um, you know, anytime we can get more people up to the audience level and actively participating, whether they're communicating electronically, or in person, or at the microphone, I'm all for that. Um, the other point I wanted to bring up is maybe kind of a little bit of context, because a lot of discussion was had around population increases and the housing developments that are going up. Um, back in 2012 and 13, I had the privilege of being one of several people that, um, represented the school district on the master plan steering committee for the town. And for people who aren't familiar with that process, it's guided by RSA, communities in New Hampshire are required every 10 years to do a really comprehensive, um, advisory document that goes into absolutely everything, from demographics, to natural resources, to businesses, to the school district, just everything imaginable. And one of the pieces that came out of the last document was an incredible need for the kind of housing we suddenly see this huge boom in, and that's multifamily use, or multifamily dwellings, mixed use, which we're not seeing a ton of yet, where you might have like offices or business on the first level, but housing on the upper level. Um, one of the interesting things is that it's happening all at once right now, or so it seems, but I think that piece of advice is, is something we're gonna continue to see request for coming before the planning board more than not, because it's actually a huge housing deficit in Merrimack proper. Another piece to think about, in fact, let me clarify that and just say, as the parent of three Merrimack High School grads who are now also through college, it's a piece of housing that if we want to keep our local grads in the community, is absolutely essential. It's as close to affordable housing, and it's borderline at that, um, for people like my daughter, who's sitting here with me now. Um, I see John smiling, he started with this district when she was in the third grade. I'm gonna scare you and tell you she turns 28 next month. Sorry, Jen. But something interesting I see talked about all the time on WMUR is that right now in New Hampshire, we are so far behind the demand for housing, not just in Merrimack, but statewide. Our vacancy rate is under 1%. That's basically turnover, and Merrimack's no exception to that right now. We have people that want to move into the state, and that includes Merrimack. So I think the trend is gonna continue, and I think it will be interesting when we're tasked with doing that master plan steering document again in a couple of years, to see where that recommendation stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Nancy Murphy, I'm one of the state reps. I just wanted to say thank you for all of the time and effort that you put into this whole budget process. Um, I know that what we see here is a long meeting, and that's just a little glimpse into the amount of time that I, I know goes into, to everything. I thank you for all your work, all of the, um, principals and the assistant principals that came here tonight, the recognition of the janitors and the support staff in schools. I think we can be pretty proud of our, our, uh, school system, and we know we have some, some challenges to meet. Um, I'm happy to hear some of the recommendations that were made tonight for additional staffing. I, too, pay very high taxes, and I don't want my taxes to go up, so I understand the concerns of taxpayers. Um, however, um, you know, we, we have children here, and it's our job to educate them, and it's our job to do it well. So I thank you for doing your part and trying. Thank you.
Back at you, Nancy. Thank you for coming to our meetings and, and participating. We know you've come to the table for us a couple of times already. Uh, are there any other people on the comment under public comments? Seeing none, we will take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn made by Andy, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, the motion carries forward 00. Thank you and good night.